Royal Commission into violence, abuse, neglect and exploitation of people with disability is now in session.
Good morning, everybody. I invite Commissioner Mason to make the acknowledgement of the country.
This morning, we acknowledge the First Nations people as the original inhabitants of the lands on which this hearing is sitting. Nganganga, jokoro, ngorok, kalhene, ngorok, kwaripa, chara, ninanja, chura. Ngora, nganganga, we recognise Meijin, Brisbane. Nganana, ngorok, kanta, nganye, ngora. Meijin, Brisbaneter. We recognise the country, north and south of the Brisbane River, as the home of both the Durbur and Jaggaro nations. Ngananga, ngorok, kanta, nganye, karo. Panya, Brisbane River, nyah. Alinjara, mono, obarira. Arongo, ngora, rica. Chura, ninanja, mono, kware, ninanyi. Durbur, mono, jagarona. And we pay respect to the Gadigal people of the Eora nation. Their land is where the city of Sydney is now located. We also pay respect to the Wurundjeri people of the Kulin nation, where the city of Melbourne is now located. We pay deep respects to all elders, past, present and future, and especially elders' parents and young people and children with disability. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Mason. Yes, Mr Crowley? Mr Crowley, I can't hear you, so I'm not sure whether you're on mute, perhaps?
No idea.
I can hear you now.
Yes, that's fine now, as a chair, we're getting some feedback at this end.
Yes, it is, and I assume Commissioners Galbulay and Mason can hear you as well.
Just having some audio issues here, Chair, but I think it's trying to be rectified.
Yeah, no, I can hear you.
Oh, we're getting feedback at this end. But Chair, this morning, the first session we have will be the evidence of Grace. We will speak about her experience and the experiences of Miriam in her care. That evidence will be dealt with by Ms Tarago, who will be soon calling Grace. But as I said, Chair, we're just having some audio difficulties at this end.
Well, shall we just adjourn for a couple of minutes to see if that can be rectified?
Yes, if we could please, Chair, because it's quite distracting at this end, we're getting a repeat reboot.
Now, I can imagine that to be the case. All right, we'll adjourn, and then we'll reconvene when someone lets us know that things have improved.
Yes, thank you.
The Royal Commission is adjourned. The Royal Commission is resumed.
Yes, Mr Agar.
Thank you, Chair. Commissioners, this morning we'll hear from Grace, who, I understand, appears on the screen, who is a former carer of Miriam. Grace will tell us about Miriam's experiences in out-of-home care in the Northern Territory. You will find a copy of Grace's statement in tender bundle part A at tab 50. There are also a number of other documents that will also be tendered in due course. I understand that Grace will be taking an oath this morning.
Thank you very much. Do you wish to tender Grace a statement at this stage, or do you wish to do that later?
At a later point, Chair.
Thank you very much. Grace, thank you very much for coming to the Royal Commission to give evidence. We appreciate your attendance. If you would be good enough to follow the instructions that will be given to you for the administration of the oath, thank you very much.
Grace, I will read you the oath. At the end, please say yes or I do. Do you swear by Almighty God that the evidence which you shall give shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, Grace. Just to explain where we all are, because it's a little complicated. There are three Commissioners at this hearing. Commissioner Galbulay is in Melbourne. Commissioner Mason is in our Brisbane hearing room. I am in the Sydney hearing room. Ms Tarago, who will now ask you some questions, is also in the Brisbane hearing room, and you are somewhere else, I assume.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So Grace, before I start, you've made a statement for the Royal Commission?
Yes.
And that is a 25-page statement that was dated the 15th of September 2021?
Yes.
Are the contents of the statement true and correct to the best of your knowledge and belief?
Yes.
Chair, I tender the bundle part A at tab 50 and ask that it be marked Exhibit 16.7?
Very well. The statement of Grace will be admitted into evidence and marked as Exhibit 16.7.
Chair, I also tender 103 documents which relate to Miriam, which also includes a pre-recorded statement from Miriam herself. The materials are in tender bundle part A, tabs 51 to 154. I ask that those be marked Exhibits 16.7.1 to 16.7.103.
Yes, the documents to which you have referred will be admitted into evidence and given the markings you have indicated, namely 16.7.1 to 16.7.103. Thank you.
Thank you. In tendering these materials, I draw attention to the pseudonym direction, which is document CTH-DNP-00099, and that is in place in relation to the identities of certain witnesses, including Grace and Miriam, as well as Caleb and Caroline.
Thank you.
Grace, I'd like to start off by asking some questions about yourself. You're not a First Nations person?
I'm not.
And you're a mother of three adult children?
My biological children, yes.
And you're also a qualified teacher?
Yes.
How long have you worked as a teacher for?
Mainly a few years in Alice Springs. More relief teaching and release teaching, part-time.
And do you still teach?
No.
And you also spent several years with the Victorian police?
Yes.
But for the most part, in recent times, you've been a foster carer for many years?
Yes.
And how many children would you say you fostered over your lifetime?
There was about 33 children in Victoria. In the Northern Territory, there was possibly up to, um, eight.
And over what period of time have you been a foster carer?
From around 2003 until I resigned in 2016, on and off, yeah.
And you're currently the guardian of Caleb?
Yes.
And Caleb is a young person who you initially fostered and now has guardianship?
Yes.
And Caleb has a disability?
Yes.
Are you able to explain what his disability is for the Commissioners?
Caleb has fetal alcohol spectrum disorder. He has ADHD and ODD, which is oppositional defiance disorder. That was diagnosed in 2018.
Thank you. And can you tell the Commissioners a little bit about Caleb, who he is as a young person?
Caleb is an outgoing, very social, friendly young man, very sporty. He's actually competitive in the sports, representing his state today. He's loving, he's affectionate, he's just a gorgeous young man.
And from time to time, you were also caring for his older sister, Miriam?
That's right.
And Miriam has been reunified with the family and is no longer in care, is that right?
Yes.
And Miriam and Caleb are both First Nations children?
Yes.
And today you've been given permission by Miriam and Caleb's mother to speak on her behalf about her children?
Yes.
Why is that so important for you to have that permission?
That's always been important for me. To me, I've always worked with the families, with their children, and always been in communication, and I still am. They ring me regularly. Caleb sees his family regularly. They've come and stayed with me. And we see them, now that we've relocated, we still see them every, probably every 10 weeks in Alice Springs.
So Grace, I'd like to ask you some questions about how Miriam and Caleb came to know you. You were based in Alice Springs, working at the Central Australian Aboriginal Congress?
Yes.
When did you start working there?
It would have been 2008, for about, I think, 18 months.
And what was your role?
My role was to go into, it was a new program, I believe, and it was to go into the town camps with a list of children that needed following up for ear health called otitis media.
And how did you come to know Miriam's family?
Through that and also through my church.
And who was Miriam living with at the time?
Her grandmother, who was actually her grandfather's sister, but always called her grandmother.
And now after that time, you were then asked to care for Miriam?
Yes, I received a phone call one day from her great-aunt, another lady, who I knew really well through the church, and she asked me to help out because Miriam wasn't sleeping and wasn't getting taken to school, and it was important to that family that she attend school.
And was it your understanding that at that point it was just caring for Miriam on a short-term basis?
I did ask them about that, and I said, she can come for a holiday and I can help you out. I went to see them and speak to them about it, and that was always my understanding, yes.
And do you remember how old Miriam was at the time?
Yep, she'd just turned five. She was born in 2006. She had a birthday in January. She came to me in February 2011.
And when you started caring for Miriam, was the Department of Territory Families involved at that stage?
No. Oh, yes, they were, but I didn't know that.
And after a couple of weeks, the department informed you that they were Miriam's guardian?
After a few weeks, I had a phone call. I did ask the family. They told me she wasn't with the department. But I got a phone call to say return her immediately to her grandmother, which I did.
And in 2011, Caleb was born?
Um, yeah.
And you started, you became his foster carer at that point in time?
No, not quite that point in time. It was quite a process. The family had told me that I was to grow that boy up, even when he was not born. I knew his mum then, and it was, he was in hospital for three months before I took his sister, Miriam, to see him. And then, and then I just went through the process of getting, becoming official foster carer, so I could get, so I could look after him.
And why was Caleb in hospital at the time?
I believe it was, he had a heart operation when he was about six weeks old. He'd been down to Adelaide the day he was born, and then he went to Melbourne when he was six weeks old for a heart operation. And I believe it was because, I think it was because the department had taken him when he was born, and I think that's why the family asked me to have him, because they knew that he was going to be taken. And I think he was waiting there for a foster family. That was my, my understanding.
And in 2013, you were granted sole custody and legal guardianship over Caleb?
Yes.
And at that stage, you hadn't applied for the same with Miriam?
No, I never applied officially, no.
Was there any particular reason at that point in time?
It was a totally different set of circumstances. Caleb had some major heart issues, and the family recognised that they couldn't give him that level of care. It was always meant to be a long-term proposition with Caleb, with Miriam. She was always meant to go back to her grandmother, I thought.
And now you formally started caring for Miriam as a foster carer, and in your statement, you talk about her staying with you for about 12 months until she wanted to return to her grandmother?
Yep.
So during that period that she was in your care, did you notice any problem with Miriam and your children?
Not initially. I think that was the time it came out that the department was starting to push for long-term care, and I approached my older children about that, and that's when it came out that there were some major problems going on that I really hadn't, unfortunately, picked up on particularly. And there was some victimisation going on for my 15-year-old daughter. And as a result of that information, my daughter started to get some psychological counselling. And in that counselling...
Would you like to take a short break?
In that counselling, the psychologist told me I had to choose between the two of them.
Are you okay? Would you like to have a little break?
No, I'm okay.
It's perfectly all right to take a break if you would like to. Why don't we take a break for five minutes or so, and then we'll resume?
Thank you, Chair.
All right, thank you.
The Royal Commission is resumed. The Royal Commission is now resumed.
Yes, thank you very much, Grace. If you do need any time to take, at any time to take a break, please let us know. I'll now ask Ms Tarago to continue her question.
Thank you, Chair. Now, Grace, you were just talking about some behaviours. Can I also ask whether, at that point in time, you had been advised by anybody, whether Miriam had been the subject of any sexual assault or abuse allegations?
No, not at that time, no.
And sometime after Miriam left your care because she wanted to return to her grandmother, is that correct?
Yes, and her grandmother agreed to have her back, yes.
And also during that time that Miriam was in your care, were you advised by the department whether Miriam had any health conditions at that point?
No.
Now, I'd like to ask you some questions about Miriam's time in a group home. So could you tell the Commissioner how that came about?
Sure. From what I know, my understanding, it wasn't all to do with me because she wasn't with me at the time, but she was to go back to her grandmother. Then I found out a long time later that that was never going to happen. She then went to another foster carer, I think, till the foster carer was, till her auntie was ready to have her. And then sadly, I think that was the time her foster carer was going overseas, and her family didn't want Miriam to go with her. So I think, and then, and then it fell through with the auntie as well. So I think then it went to, that's when I found out that Miriam was going into, what they called me, told me was a safe home, which I later found out was a group home. I was really, really upset, and I spoke with her grandmother. And I believe her grandmother spoke to the department, but I certainly did. And I sent emails asking for that little girl. She was only seven, just turned seven. And I heard that, anyway, a little bit into that time, one of the department workers rang me and asked if I could have Miriam one night a week, I think it was. And I said yes, and that's when I noticed that Miriam was more and more reluctant to go back, and she started to share some stuff with me that was happening at the home. And there was a lot of teenagers at the home. She was the youngest. And she was saying that they would slide under her shower and join her in the shower, that they would pick on her, that they would chase her, and there was nowhere safe she could go. So I tried to help her and say, go and speak to the workers, but there was no safe place for her to run to. And finally, it would have been after maybe a couple of months, I rang the department and said, look, please, can she stay with me until her foster carer gets back? And they said no. And I said, well, she can't go back, she's not safe there, and they wouldn't allow it. And I said, well, all right, I'll bring her back, then I'm going to go via the police station and make a statement about the bullying that's going on. And that's when they said, she can stay with me until her foster carer returns. That's my recollection, yeah.
And how old was Miriam at the time?
She would have been still seven.
Sorry, we didn't quite hear that.
Seven?
Seven. And did you have any discussions with her carer around that time with respect to the bullying?
Yes. Oh, um, well, I would have at some point. I don't remember a lot of that.
And so Miriam ultimately returned to your care?
Actually, sorry, yes, I did with the foster carer, because I remember her saying to me that she'd come back from the home a broken little girl.
Did you have any explanation why she was a broken little girl?
I think just because of the ongoing bullying.
And were you aware of any other behaviours at that time that Miriam might have been displaying?
Yeah, the foster carer started to share with me that more and more how how hard it was and how difficult she was, and she was bullying, she started bullying one of the carer's children, another foster child, who was a lot older than Miriam. And things were becoming very, very difficult there, and I remember how upset the carer was. And she'd go to the department and ask for help, and she just didn't know what to do. And she was getting blamed, I believe, for her parenting, and it became a total mess.
Now, I just want to take you to 2016, and Miriam's in your care, and a road trip that you had planned. Can you tell me what you had discovered about Miriam during that time on the road trip?
Sure. She, she was becoming, I discovered that she was actually what we call sniffing volatile substances. And when I did find this out, and possibly chroming, which is aerosol cans, when I found this out, I immediately told the department. In a way, I was thinking, we've got something we can work with now. We can get this child some help and support, also. So concerned for her that she received that support.
And in your statement, you talk about the chroming and sniffing of volatile substances too, being linked to her time in the group home?
Oh, yeah, that's right. She told me. I said, how did you learn how to do this? And she said, the kids taught me in the group home.
And did you receive any supports to deal with that particular issue?
No.
Do you remember whether there was any referral to drug and alcohol substance abuse centres or services?
I remember. The department mentioned a, I think it was, what was it called? Anyway, I rang them, that volatile substance abuse people, and I spoke to someone, I forget his name now. And so I did all the follow-up, and then I booked her in for counselling with a counsellor for it. And at that counselling appointment, one of the department workers turned up, and he sat in on the appointment, and that's where she disclosed to the counsellor that she had been, she'd learned to sniff at the group home.
And did she disclose anything else with respect to sexual abuse at all at that point in time?
Not to the counsellor. She disclosed that to me in Easter 2016.
So just going back to the volatile substances, were there any instances where Miriam, whilst in your care, had been caught using?
Yes.
And what happened on that occasion?
I just spoke with her and asked her what was going on, and that's when she talked to me. She didn't talk to me about it straight away. But, yeah, I just tried to manage it. I tried to remove the stuff, but it's pretty tricky. Every time she went to someone's house, she could take stuff from their office and stuff. So it was a little bit hard to manage, but I tried. And then, we were supposed to go up to Darwin, but I got to the turn-off to Alice Springs from Queensland, and I said, no, we're going home to get you the help you need, and we cut our trip short and went straight back to Alice Springs.
And did you receive any advice from the department about how to deal with Miriam's substance abuse?
I rang the hotline, and they told me to just monitor her and not, and find out where it was that she was using. And they told me that if she's using to take, to ring an ambulance and go to hospital.
And did you ever have to call for an ambulance?
Well, I think it was on the Easter Monday morning that I discovered she had been sniffing again. And I called for an ambulance then, and they asked me if she'd ever been violent, and I said, I didn't want to say yes, but I realised that she was becoming quite aggressive. So I said yes, so a police officer attended as well, and I went with her to hospital. And that's where I told her she wouldn't be coming back with me for a little while till she'd received some counselling for her sniffing addiction and her sexualised behaviour.
So just in respect of the disclosure you mentioned before in 2016 about sexual abuse complaint, can you tell the Commissioner what happened?
I noticed Miriam leaving Caleb's room one night. She had no reason to be in there, and I went in and spoke with him. She had no reason to be in there and I went in and spoke with, with him. And he told me that he, she. She had been um. Touching him inappropriately. A- and I then went out and I spoke to Miriam. And she burst into tears and told me what. What she'd done. She told me that it had, had happened to her when she was little, little girl. At all part, her camp. Um.
Sorry, continue.
And, and I took some notes and I immediately rang the, I told her I would have to let the department know. And I immediately rang them. And, and told them what it was, what had happened and. What happened? A while after that, I got a call from the um. The police wanting to interview Caleb, who was, I think. Um. Four? Yeah, four at the time. And they, I took him in and they interviewed him on his own. And they also, I thought they were just talking to me and just to find out what had happened and they um. I found out later they'd been, they investigated me as well. And. Yeah.
And, and that's when you say um the first time that you became aware that she had been sexually abused?
Yes.
And can you tell the commissioners about that experience of the police investigation? With respect to how you were feeling when you learned that they were also investigating you?
I think the only reason I found out is because I rang the hotline to find out what had happened with that. And they said to me. Uh, don't worry, you're in the clear. And I said, what do you mean? They said, you've been investigated and, and um, you're in the clear. And I said, oh, I wasn't ringing for that, but I did not realise that. But then I had a big meeting with the department. And one of the investigators was there and. Um, it was an emotional meeting and. Yeah, that's, that's when I, I realised, yeah.
Um, now, I'd like to talk about Miriam's return to the group home in twenty sixteen. Um, how old was she at the time?
Sixteen, she'd just turned ten.
And um. Had you been given advice by the department about her being placed in a group home again?
Yes, they told me on the night, I think it was at the hospital, that they were opening up a home just for her. I told them that. She needed to be in a, a caring family with no children until the um. She'd received counselling and, and was able to be strong enough and, and, and able to be returned to me.
And notwithstanding that she had uh no longer in your care, did you have contact visits? Uh, for Caleb during that time?
Yes, um, yes, that's what I was trying hard to organise. It was hard to, to um organise that.
And, and during the period of time where she was in the group home for the second time, her grandmother had passed away?
Yes, she passed away. She was in a coma for two weeks. It was almost on the, the same time that she was, that Miriam was put into the group home. And I ran the department and then I went to speak to them because her grandmother was really her. She was very close to her. As far as I know, nothing was said to Miriam until. Um. I think it was. I think she died about two weeks later, the grandmother. And I think it took two weeks for Miriam to be told. And I was really concerned because she went to a state school where kids from that camp were going. And I was so worried that she was gonna be told at the school that this. Her grandmother, who she loved so much, had died.
And other than being in um the guardianship of the department. Her grandmother was the, the most predominant person in her life who'd raised her.
Yes.
Uh, and as I understand it, in June twenty sixteen, you made a complaint to the Office of the Children's Commissioner for the Northern Territory?
Yes.
Could you talk a little bit about what your complaint was about?
Um. Sure, it was about. An investigation into the group home. It was about the sexual abuse. And why wasn't I informed about that, especially as I later found out that there had been some. Um. Disclosures made to the other foster carer. That involved Caleb. When he was a baby. And that hadn't been passed on to me and I. Did wonder why. When the department knew that, because I saw the complaint. Written by the foster carer then, that why he was, why she. Was around Caleb when that had happened.
And do you recall being given a response by the Children's Commissioner?
They said that it was out of time to investig- investigate the group home. And they said that on the care plan, that the box had been ticked for um. Some sexualised behaviour, I think it was. And, and when I answered that letter, I said that it wasn't. Ticked on one of the first care plan I got, I think it was. And it also took weeks for. Need to ask for that care plan. It wasn't delivered to me on the day when I, when um Miriam came back.
Um, and you also met with the Northern Territory Chief Minister, Adam Galls, at the time?
Yes, I did. I wrote him a, an email and I met with him in person in the Alice Springs office. He rang the department and asked what was going on. And I found out later that um, the department was in a uproar, was the word used. And. Um. Then he followed up with a, a letter. Basically saying that, I think Alfaring, the um minister. That John Alfaring had been informed and was investigating and it all seemed to be okay.
And ultimately, you resigned as a carer in August twenty sixteen? And, and how did that affect you, that decision to cease being a carer?
It was a hard decision to make. I felt that nothing was happening. I was making complaints, I was talking to people, I was trying to get somewhere, but. I think they call it the deafening silence. Um. Emails weren't answered, they prob- said they'd ring, they never rang. Um, it would go ages. I didn't know what was happening, didn't know where to go. Um, in the meantime, I'm trying to parent three teenage children as well. And that, that doesn't come into the equation ever when you're a foster carer. Um. Who else is? You know, who else is you're caring for, who else is part of the family? It's all just. I don't know. Sorry, what was the question?
Just, just how it was, um, how you felt making that decision to resign?
Oh, yeah, it was. Yeah, it was awful. And I got the um Foster Care Association lady to help me. She advised not to put anything in there, just to basically say, I'm resigning now. And I didn't, I didn't list why, any reasons why.
Uh, now Grace, I'd like to talk about your concerns that Miriam also suffers from fetal alcohol spectrum disorder, so also known as FASD. What do you know about FASD?
Early days, not a lot. But the behaviour of the two, two children. A- and as an ex- a foster carer and also a mum and a teacher. Their behaviour wasn't normal. It wasn't, there was something wrong and I, I wasn't sure what was, what was going on. It, it was quite violent, it was quite um. The, you, you have the two-year-old temper tantrums that we all know about, but these were meltdowns. And these meltdowns would last. A long, long time. And there was often a reason for them. And even if they got what they wanted, they couldn't stop it. Um, some of their behaviours quite destructive and. Miriam would target those who would upset her, in particular my fifteen-year-old. And she'd go out and scratch the car or break a window or. Um. And intellectually, um, struggling at school. Um, nowhere near the standard of a grade, a grade three or grade four-year-old. And I started to question that and, and look more into it. So I, I questioned it with her psychologist. And I felt bad for questioning it because I felt like they wanted me, I was labelling this child and I. And then I spoke to the department anyway and. I never got any information back about that. But in the meantime, I had um. Put my, put um Caleb on the waiting list for the um Sunshine Coast Diagnostic. Clinic. And we had to wait two years and we got him assessed in twenty eighteen.
And so when you had initially uh spoken to the psychologist, um, what year was that?
About Miriam's.
Yes, about.
Yeah. Can't remember.
Uh, was she still in your care at the time?
Yes, she was, um.
And um.
Yeah, she was, yes. It would have been maybe twenty, end of. Twenty fifteen, maybe. I'm not sure, sorry.
It's okay. And do you know if Miriam has ultimately ever been assessed for FASD?
I would doubt it.
Now. You've spoken with Miriam for the purpose of this hearing um about whether she would like to participate. And uh you've done a short pre-record with her and, and she has done some artwork.
Mm-hmm.
Um, can you just um. Tell the commissioners um what you had asked her to paint?
I asked her to paint how she felt when she was um removed from her family and from me. Because it wasn't just me she was removed from, it was also her indigenous family. And that was what I was so upset about, that the, that one of the workers told me that the. The group home kids were now her family. And they would actually put their birthday parties over functions with her own indigenous family. Her indigenous family would try to ring and they wouldn't um let her, let them talk to her at the group homes. They were just shut out totally of any decision-making, was my understanding. And they were very upset, which is why they wanted the kids with me in the first place, so they could have that ongoing contact. It just seemed like, once they remove the child, they will remove them from their previous relationships as well. And because Miriam was disclosing more and more stuff to me, I think they were embarrassed and worried. And they would come out with, oh, Miriam doesn't wanna see you or her brother anymore. And that very day. Miriam had managed to, to um smuggle a note to me through another parent to say, I'm missing you so much, when can I see you? And Caleb. And the department would say. She doesn't wanna see you. And I'll say, I've got a note here, the very day you're telling me this. So that's what I was so upset about, that she, she was on her own and. None of us were allowed to communicate with her, really.
Could the operator please play the pre-recording video of Miriam, which is located at. I N D dot zero one one one. Dot zero 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 one. Dot zero 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 one.
Can you tell me what this picture's about? You can point to it if you want. That one looks really angry, that one there. Is that an angry face?
Yeah.
Yeah, and this one here, that one looks really sad. Is that a sad face?
Yes.
Is that what, can you tell me why you drew it angry in a sad face?
Because I was sad and seeing my families.
Hmm.
And angry.
And, and what happens that you couldn't see your family?
I was sad and angry.
Yeah, and what happened? Why couldn't you see your family?
Mm-hmm.
Do you wanna say? You sure? Thank you for drawing that, painting that. Is there anything else you wanna say?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you for sharing.
Mr. Raga, can we um establish when that was made, that uh interchange, please?
Yes, um Grace, do you recall the date? That that pre-recorded video was made?
It was May, the last school holidays. This year.
Chair, as indicated in um. Uh. The commission's notes, the date is the twelfth of July twenty twenty one.
Thank you.
Um, finally, Grace, there were some recommendations that you made in, in your statement. Would you? Like to share those with the commissioners?
Okay. I think one of the important ones is. Money's thrown at child protection to remove kids. Instead of coming alongside the families and helping to keep these families together. Let's support the families to keep their kids. Let's, let's put the money there, especially when. Anyway, that would be one recommendation. Um, when a child comes into the care of a foster carer, they should go through a health check that can help to identify. Any significant health conditions such as FASD and proper supports be put in place from the beginning. What a difference that would have made. I think foster carers should be treated as fellow workers by child protection. That we're working together, that we have the day-to-day. Um. We're, we're there day-to-day with these children, twenty-four, seven. And we know them so well. And, and they need to listen to the foster carers. They need to support the foster carer as well. And their families so that they can continue to do what they're doing. I never made a complaint against a foster carer, I mean, a, a worker, until this all happened. We try to get on, we try to do the best we can, but there is a saying amongst foster carers that. If you rock the boat, if you ask for help, if you advocate for the children, you will be discriminated against. And you could have the child removed, and it does happen. And I think that. There should be personal accountability for. Child protection workers when they make these decisions. Or don't. There should be accountability. There isn't other things. Police, police, if they make the wrong decision, they have to answer for it in court. They can be charged. But not hide behind the um, an anonymous department. And I think that. Maybe their decisions will be more accountable if that was to happen. There's a few more I've listed, but maybe that will do for now.
Well, thank you, Grace, they're all the questions that I had. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Grace, I'll just ask the other commissioners if it's okay with you, if they have any questions for you. Commissioner Galbally?
Thank you so much um for your statement. Um, look, I'd like to follow up that last point you made about advocacy. Being punished. And, and I think that you, you said, you said it with regard to foster. Carers, but you would probably, would you extend that also to the families, that if they advocate, they're also punished?
Absolutely. Of course that happens. If they, if they are struggling, and a lot of, not a lot, some of these parents are. Have disabilities themselves. A- and fetal alcohol spectrum disorder themselves. And, and it's, it's struggle to parent. Where are the supports? Where is the help? And they recognise it. And when they recognise it, well, they came to me and asked me with Caleb because they knew that I would struggle. Um, they should be able to go to a child protection. Place and ask for the help and not run the risk of if their kids are going to school that they get snatched from the school classroom. Or childcare. Or, or even in the camps, or their houses.
Thank you.
Commissioner Mason. Do you have any questions? Commissioner Mason, do you have any questions? I think you're on mute.
Grace, thank you very much for your evidence this morning and thank you for your service to First Nations children or families. Just a question, you made reference about foster carers being seen as part of the child protection system as workers. Just a question there around your resignation as a foster carer. Was there any offer made by the department to do something like an exit interview?
No.
Would you have, would you have taken up the offer if that was given to you?
I think so. I was still trying to advocate. And even after I resigned, I kept trying to get access for Caleb. I knew that Miriam and Caleb still wanted to see each other and they were missing each other. I still tried to organise that and supervised, well, with me supervising, obviously. But that became more and more difficult.
And the second question I had, Grace, was there's now really significant recognition around the role of families and families in the responsibility of giving their knowledge and skills to a child as far as developing the child culturally and socially. So in the child protection system, as a non-Indigenous person, do you think that same approach and view would be beneficial for foster carers? You mentioned about the children who, who are your biological children not being considered in the equation of that process of you being a foster carer. But do you think in light of what we know about First Nations family and culture, that that same approach should be given to foster carers who take on the care of First Nations children in relation to all the members of the household of the foster carer?
I think, are you saying that we should all receive cultural training? Um, so that we can best meet the needs of Aboriginal children?
Yes, that's right, because you're, in a sense, living and a part of that foster carer's child's life in your home. So all family members have a role to play and is, in your experiences, was that something that happened in relation to the support given by the department?
No. I remember I attended a cultural awareness course at one stage, which was actually quite good. Um, and that was through the department. Everything else was done. Um, um, we had a lot to do with, through the church mainly, but a lot to do with Aboriginal kids. Um, through programmes we were running through the church and we were doing language, um, learning the languages and, and trying, and running Bush Tucker Days and they would teach us and learning their, but that all came from, from me. Yeah.
Thank you, Grace.
Grace, in your statement, I think you say that Caleb is now thriving and that that is at least in part due to him being a participant in the NDIS. Could you just tell us a little bit about how that has changed Caleb or assisted in him having a, what I think you've described as a, being a happy, delightful child?
Um, because of the NDIS and the assessments that were made, he's been having regular occupational therapy, speech pathology, behavioural therapy. It's made a huge difference. He's now able to focus and concentrate a lot more. He's attending school three days a week and doing well. Um, he still battles with um, um meltdowns, but he's got strategies in place now to deal with that. Um, it's made a huge difference from, from his behaviour before that. Yes.
And as I understand your statement, the assistance that Caleb is getting in such things as occupational therapy, behavioural intervention and so forth followed a diagnosis of fetal alcohol syndrome. How did that diagnosis come about?
I had him on the waiting list for the Sunshine Coast Assessment Clinic. I took him, I drove him over there for the clinic and it was early days for the clinic in Alice Springs. And then he just started up. So I went over there and I think it went from, it was three or four days of assessments. And, and because of that too, it made me a lot more aware of how to parent a child with these disabilities. And that's made a profound difference too, because it's a totally different way than you would than not mainstream parenting. So it's been training for me too.
Right. And, and I think in your statement, paragraph 147, you say, you say that you travelled to the Sunshine Coast for this purpose in August 2018. Um, this was initiative, an initiative that you took yourself, I take it from your statement.
That's right, yes.
Was there any involvement of the department in any way? Did you inform them or did they seek information about this?
No, not at all, because by that stage Caleb was, I had legal guardianship of Caleb and he wasn't in the department at all. If he, yeah, if he had have been, they might have taken him as well when they took Miriam.
Yeah, all right. And could you tell us, so far as you know, where Miriam now is?
Miriam self-places. She was placed back with her mother. At the same time, her mother was um booked in for renal, so three times a week, so not, not very well. Um. Miriam self-places and goes from Kintor, Yundamoo and Alice Springs mainly. She stays with her mother where, when her mother's living in a house in Alice Springs. I'm not sure where she stays out in the communities. She does have family out there.
I see. The statement from a representative of the Northern Territory says that Miriam's care and protection order was revoked on the 19th of November 2019. And the documents that accompany that indicate that on the revocation of that order, she was to be placed with kin, an uncle and an aunt. Do you know whether that's still the position?
Um, if that's the formal placement, I wouldn't know. I just got told by the family that she was placed back with her mum and wasn't with the department anymore.
Well, we may find out more from the Northern Territory, but once the order was revoked by, I think there's a reference somewhere to the Family Court, but in fact it was the a family division of Family Matters Jurisdiction of the Local Court of the Northern Territory. Once the order is revoked, then the, as I understand it, I may be wrong, the department ceases to have any role in Miriam's care.
That was my understanding, yes.
Yes, all right. But you can't help us anymore with what's happened since that revocation order came into effect apparently in November 2019.
Well, all I can help is that she's been just self-placing, really. She, when she's in Alice Springs, I do catch up with her, my family catch up with her, she comes to our house. Um, she hasn't been going to school since she left my care, really. Um, her mum did ask me to help her get into Wiltshire in South Australia boarding school, which I tried, but because she had no school history by then, um, it's, that's one of the requirements that she has a school history. So she hasn't been attending school since, really, of any significance, since 2016, mid 2016. So she would have been ten.
Yes. All right. Um, just give me one moment, if you would. Was Miriam, to your knowledge, attending a college in, towards the end of 2019?
Yarrara was mentioned last time I spoke to her, that she was going to Yarrara at, um, I think it was either Yundamoo or Kintor, but I have no further information about that.
Yeah, all right. Well, I, I draw to your attention, and I know you won't be, we won't have seen the documents, but the affidavit in support of the application for revocation of the order states that there was a school attendance for Miriam of 30% in term three of 2019, but beyond that, I don't know what further information there may be.
I don't know either.
Yeah, all right. Thank you very much. Thank you very much for coming, giving evidence. I will just ask, there are, as you probably know, um, parties, usually governments, that have been given what's called leave to appear at these proceedings, and that includes the Northern Territory. I will just ask if any of the representatives present wish to ask any questions of Grace. Specifically, I'll ask if the Northern Territory representatives have any questions.
Yes, thank, yes, thank you, Chair. We've had.
Well, just, just, just before we get underway, I'd like to know what it is that you want to ask. Uh, Grace, what topics do you wish to cover?
Uh, Chair, this is Ms Chalmers from the Northern Territory. I was just going to let you know that we've had discussions with council assisting and sent correspondence to the commission's solicitors regarding how we address certain factual disputes in relation to Ms, sorry, Grace's evidence. Uh, and that means that we don't need to take up time today and we have not formally sought leave to cross-examine.
So does that mean you don't have any questions of Grace?
That's correct.
Thank you very much. I assume that no other representatives have any questions of Grace in relation to the evidence she has given today.
I have no questions. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Ms Vanessa. All right. I'll, I'll assume that's the case unless somebody jumps up and tells us the contrary. In those circumstances, Grace, thank you very much. Your, your evidence has finished. We thank you for your attendance and we thank you very much for the assistance that you have provided to the Royal Commission at this hearing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Argo, are we now going to take a short break?
Yes, Chair, if I could recommend till 20 past 11 Eastern Standard Time.
Well, it's now 10 past 11. Let's make it 11:25 so that if anybody wants to have a cup of tea,
Certainly.
they can get the kettle boiled. All right, till 11:25, we'll resume.
The Royal Commission is adjourned. The Royal Commission is resumed.
Yes, Mr. Power.
Thank you. Chair and Commissioners, we'll be hearing from a panel of speakers from the Central Australia Aboriginal Congress, but before we commence, Commissioner Mason wishes to make a statement.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Mason.
Yes, thank, thank you, Chair. Before the next witnesses, I wish to make a brief statement. As a resident of Alice Springs, as I know that a woman, um, I am a member of Central Australia Aboriginal Congress and it is my primary health service provider. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Power.
So the panel of speakers from Central Australia Aboriginal Congress, known as Congress, are Donna Archie, Dr John Boffa, Amelia Patterson and Hannah Blaine. And they will provide evidence in their capacity as practitioners at the largest community-controlled health organisation in the Northern Territory. Commissioners, you'll find a joint statement of Ms Donna Archie and Dr John Boffa at tender bundle part B, tab one. I ask to tender that joint statement into evidence and that it be marked exhibit 16.8.
Yes, the joint statement will be admitted with that marking.
There are then 22 additional documents as annexes to that joint statement. They are at tender bundle part B, tabs two to 23. I ask to tender those annexes into evidence marked as exhibit 16.8.1 to 16.8.22.
Yes, those annexes will be admitted into evidence with the markings you have indicated.
The other two witnesses from Congress are Amelia Patterson and Hannah Blaine, who have provided a joint statement, which is at tender bundle part B, tab 24. And I ask that their statement be tended to evidence as exhibit 16.9.
Yes, that joint statement also can be admitted into evidence with the marking of exhibit 16.9.
And I ask that the witnesses be affirmed or sworn to give evidence.
Yes, I understand that each of the witnesses wishes to take the affirmation. If you would be good enough to follow the instructions of my associate, he will administer the affirmation.
I will read you all the affirmation. At the end, please say yes or I do. Do you all solemnly and sincerely declare and affirm that the evidence which you shall give shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
I do.
Thank you very much. And thank you for coming to give evidence before the Royal Commission. Just to explain where we all are, because it is a little complicated. Commissioner Galberly is joining the proceedings from Melbourne. Commissioner Mason is in our Brisbane hearing room, as is Mr. Power, who will ask you some questions. I am in our Sydney hearing room and you are presumably in Alice Springs. There we are. Okay, Mr. Power will now ask you some questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Could I ask that each of you introduce yourselves and explain your role with the Central Australian Aboriginal Congress? Perhaps we can do it in the order of Ms Archie, Dr Boffa, Ms Patterson and then Ms Blaine?
Uh, yes, my name's Donna Archie. I'm the Chief Executive Officer of Central Australian Aboriginal Congress. Um, I've been the CEO for the last eight years and I'm a Bundjalung woman from the far north coast of New South Wales, but been living on beautiful Arrandah country for over 30 years.
Thank you. And Dr Boffa?
Yeah, my name's John Boffa. I'm the Chief Medical Officer of Public Health at Central Australian Aboriginal Congress. I've been here since 1994. Before that, I was in Ternan Creek and I've been in Congress from 1998. So in my role, I'm mainly involved in health policy, research, health promotion and quality improvement.
Thank you. And Ms Patterson?
Hi, my name's Amelia Patterson. I'm a paediatric clinical neuropsychologist here at the Central Australian Aboriginal Congress. I've been with Congress for just over two years now. Initially in the adult neuropsychology space and then moving to paediatric assessment.
And thank you. And Ms Blaine?
Yes, my name's Hannah Blaine. I'm a paediatric clinical neuropsychologist, working in the SEATS team for Congress. Um, I moved here just under 12 months ago, prior to that working for the fetal alcohol spectrum disorder clinic on the Gold Coast.
Thank you. Ms Archie, as the CEO, could you briefly explain what Central Australian Aboriginal Congress is? And briefly, how it came into being, its history?
Um, Central Australian Aboriginal Congress started back in 1973 on the basis of, of the voice of Central Australian Aboriginal people recognising that they needed, uh, you know, an organisation that would express the views of the community. It wasn't until two years. It wasn't until two years later, in nineteen seventy-five, that we started, um, a, a medical service, the start of a primary healthcare service with a doctor, transport, and a medical reception, receptionist. We've now grown into being, I think, one of the most comprehensive primary healthcare services in the country, uh, with, um, over four hundred and fifty staff, um, and, and a budget of sixty-five, uh, million, uh, dollars, and ranging from, you know, um, services that directly relate to clinical, um, services, as well as social, um, social and preventative programmes, that is then complemented with the work around, um, advocating on the things that make people sick, which is the social determinants of health.
And i- is it correct that your, that the, the Health Service Congress, um, delivers comprehensive primary healthcare to more than seventeen thousand, uh, Aboriginal people in Alice Springs and also in six remote communities in Central Australia?
Yes, that's correct.
All right, now, I'm going to, um, uh, ask questions based on topic headings, and I'll, um, direct my questions to, um, uh, people as we go. But if anyone feels that someone else can best answer that question, uh, please feel free, free to throw to someone else in your group, um.
Sorry, do you, do you mind if I just make an opening statement?
Oh, uh, yes, of course.
For the record?
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I'd first like to begin by acknowledging the, uh, Central Arrandah traditional owners of the land, um, on which we are giving evidence here today, and pay my respects to their elders, uh, past, present, and emerging, um, and thank the Commission for giving us the opportunity, um, or me the opportunity, to make a brief opening statement, which I'd like to just highlight three key points, um, in the areas that we think are vitally important. The first and most important area is to ensure that all Aboriginal children with developmental delay under the age of seven are detected as early as possible and then quickly get on to an early childhood, early interv- intervention plan, so they can receive the extra report that they, extra support that they need, as well as a comprehensive assessment. Um, after four years of struggle, and I mean four years of big struggle, um, of, of constantly writing to people, raising in various forums that, um, I'm involved in, I'm pleased to say that over the past few months, about forty Aboriginal children, um, who are at, who are Congress clients are now accessing these plans and getting the support they need to give them the best chance of returning to a pathway of healthy development. And I think it's just absolutely outrageous that it's taken a service like Congress, um, that long to finally get the most vulnerable children in our communities. And we see what the, you know, what the data is in relation to the Australian Early Childhood, um, Development, um, census in terms of the vulnerability, developmental vulnerability for, for a lot of our kids in Central Australia, that it's taken this long, um, to get to this point. Um, it is the role and the responsibility of the primary healthcare system to make sure that all children are screening regularly at different, um, ages using a validated tool known as the ASQ track. This can be done in about forty-five minutes by appropriately, appropriately trained Aboriginal health workers and nurses, and is the gateway into the NDIS for children who need it. The majority of Aboriginal children in Central Australia are yet to be assessed using this tool, and if they have been, are yet to be referred for an ECEI plan. The challenge is to put in place the systems that make children, uh, sorry, systems that make sure this is being done at a population level for all Aboriginal children who present to health services regularly through their early years. The second key issue is the need to ensure that there is capacity to undertake comprehensive, multidisciplinary assessments for children who need this based on what is now considered the best practice model developed by Congress in our Child and Youth Assessment and Treatment Service, or SEATS, and you'll hear from our fantastic two neuro psychs today. Of the group of children with developmental delay, some will have more serious underlying neurodevelopmental disorders, and these need to be diagnosed as soon as possible as well. This is the next level of assessment for a much smaller group of children following population screening. It, it is often not possible to make a formal diagnosis of a disability, uh, until children get closer to the age of seven, but in the most severe cases, it is possible to make a diagnosis earlier. At present, there is no Commonwealth or state or territory funding agency responsible for funding these vital services. A recent national tender process by the NDIA to fund assessment panels was so structurally flawed that it was never going to fund a service like SEATS.
Look, I think I'll have to ask you to bring this to a conclusion. Please make the third point. The difficulty is that this is a forum for receiving evidence. I understand the points, uh, that you're making, and we have a whole submissions process, but we're not in a position to test material that's coming to us in this form. So by all means, make the third point as briefly as you can, and then Mr Power will ask questions, and if there are matters you wish to raise, please do.
Okay, thanks, Chair. Well, the third and final issue that I'd like to highlight is the key need to establish secure care rehabilitation facilities for young people with neurodevelopmental and other disabilities, so we can get them out of detention centres once and for all.
Um, thank you, Ms Archie, and much of what you've said in that opening statement are key points that are in the statements from Congress, and I want to just go into essentially each of the topics you've raised. Now, um, the first, uh, area is, um, something you've already raised, which is the prevention and early intervention to prevent entry into out-of-home care, um, and to avoid, where possible, um, negative impacts of developmental delay. Now, just for the record, this is, um, dealt with in your joint statement, uh, with Dr Boffa at paragraphs thirty-three to thirty-six, fifty-eight to sixty-one, and, uh, sixty-six. Now, if, perhaps if I can turn, um, to Dr Boffa, um, uh, Dr Boffa, uh, in the, the joint, uh, statement, um, you, you, you talk about the link that's seen between high levels of disadvantage and the prevalence of development, uh, developmental vulnerability. In your experience, uh, a- as a prac- medical practitioner, but also in your role with Congress, could you explain to the Commission what you've seen in that regard and, and why what is set out in your statement, um, is, is made in that way?
Yeah, well, firstly, um, when we're talking about developmental delay, um, it's prevalent, um, but we have to make sure we're assessing it properly. When we did child health checks until the last few years, when we've had the advantage of having a validated tool, which is the ASQ track, it was assessed very, um, in an ad hoc manner and not in a manner that was objective, and not in a manner that you could really act on. And partly the reason for that was there wasn't much point in picking up kids with developmental delay, because there was very little in the way of interventions for them anyway. So it was almost unethical to screen and find it, because what would you do next? The NDIS has been a game changer in that regard. So now, um, we do, we, we estimate that probably twenty percent of all Aboriginal children are going to be below the key cutoff points on two or more domains in their developmental assessment. And we're talking physical development, social development, um, emotional development. You know, there's, there's a range of different areas that are assessed in that tool. Um, it might be slightly below that, but it's, it's going to be somewhere of that order. And as Donna mentioned in her opening address, the AEDC scores for this area, which is the first year of school, have suggested, you know, thirty-five, forty percent of children are developmentally vulnerable on two or more domains in that first year of school. Um, obviously, children a little bit older than, the earlier you start, the less you, the harder it is to detect. But with a valid screening tool, I think we're going to find a very significant number of children that are developmentally vulnerable early on or developmental delay, and it's particularly in the emotional area and the language and cognitive area that we're, we're finding issues. Um, some of those things are just because if, you know, if children have been understimulated at home, um, they, and, and not had the sort of responsive care they need, but particularly under stimulation, they won't have had the opportunity to develop normally and, and, and in a healthy manner. And as we know, at birth, twenty-five percent of the brain's developed. By age four, ninety-two percent of the brain's developed. So in those early years, there's massive development, as long as a child has a good diet and plenty of iron, and that's another issue, um, and, and responsive care and stimulation, neural networks are being laid down to create a healthy, a healthy young person. Now, it's incredibly important that that stimulation happens, and it's important that it happens at the critical periods. So the sooner we pick up children that are not quite on the developmental pathway they need to be, and the sooner we provide additional supports, the more chance there is of getting that child back to normal. And that's why Donna mentioned that population level screening is vital. We've got to find the kids that are developmentally delayed early. We've got to support them. A lot of kids will improve. The kids that don't improve are the ones that you've got to deep dive into, more comprehensive assessments, and they might have underlying conditions, and they're going to need more support. So the whole system now, the NDIS is there, can work, but, and it is a game changer. And so we, we've just got to make sure that in the primary healthcare setting, we're actually assessing children properly and, and with a validated tool.
And so we'll come to that validated tool, um, slightly later in, in your, in your evidence. But, um, you used, uh, uh, um, an acronym, um, AEDC. That's the Early, Australian Early Development Census, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
And in your statement at paragraph sixty, you note that, um, the results, uh, for two thousand and fifteen showed that before they started school, Aboriginal children in Alice Springs were six times as likely to be vulnerable on two or more developmental domains, and sixty percent of Aboriginal children in the region are developmentally vulnerable on at least one domain. And, and from what you've said, you, you're indicating, and you indicate in the statement, that there are a number of, um, underlying causes for those delays, um, and that, uh, that's why population level screening is so important, um, to be able to detect these problems very early and take appropriate steps. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's right. It's, it's, as I said, it's prevalent, and we've known that since two thousand and fifteen, and we've been giving that data to the NDIS from the moment it was established to show them that there is a very significant population health issue here for the development of children, and it should have led to early childhood, early intervention services and programmes a long time ago.
Okay. Um, and, um, i- if I can turn to, uh, Ms Patterson and, um, Ms Blaine?
Just before you do that, uh,
Yes.
I wonder if you could help me, Dr Boffa. Um, you've referred in paragraph sixty to Aboriginal children in Alice Springs being, uh, six times more likely to be vulnerable on two or two more developmental domains. Can you just explain a little more about the developmental domains? How many are there? What do they indicate?
Yeah, there's five. Do you want to do that? There's-
Um, yeah, so on the ASQ track, we've got the cognitive domain, um, there's fine motor skills, gross motor skills, uh, language, and then, uh, social, emotional, um, skills. So it's just generally going into where we'd, um, the milestones of where we'd expect kids to be at, at each age, um, in those certain domains, and it's about the person assessing or, or speaking with the family at the time, whether it be a child health nurse, um, seeing whether they can observe some of those skills during the session with the child and the, um, family, um, and whether they can elicit history from the family as to whether those skills are happening at home or not. Um, from that, they'll get a score that suggests whether they're meeting developmental milestones age appropriately in each of those areas. Um, there can be a slightly below cutoff, and that, those are the kids that might not quite be, um, where they should be for their age in those different areas. Um, and so some more work needs to be done, and that might be giving the parent, um, some ideas around what they can do to increase the stimulation in those areas at home. Um, and then there's below cutoff, which is suggesting that the, um, that some early intervention does need to happen in order to, um, have some specialist support for the children to, um, continue to grow across the domains that they're falling below cutoff.
And in the AEDC, they're slightly different. So there's physical, language and cognitive, emotional, social, and community of development, which is slightly, which analogous to what we've heard is in the ASQ track. And that's assessed over three days, so children have to be at school for three days in a row. It's assessed in, it's assessed on all children across the country, but the data is not broken down Aboriginal, non-Arrogional. So that data we've given you, luckily, the Menzies School of Health Research gave us the identified data. Otherwise, we wouldn't have been able to tell you that Aboriginal children are six times more vulnerable on two domains in the first year of school. That data's not been made public. It's done every three years, so the two thousand and eighteen data, I couldn't tell you, because they don't break it down Aboriginal, non-Arrogional, and they don't even give it to services like us to see. So we've got our own data now, because we've been doing our own population screening using the ASQ track, so we're getting our own idea of that. But it is important that there's transparency in the AEDC data, um, and there isn't.
All right, that, that's very helpful, thank you. Uh, who compiles the, uh, relevant domains and criteria in the census?
That was-
Commonwealth.
Yeah, the Department of Education.
So that's a na- I see, that's a national standard that is applied to all children, is it, in Australia?
Yeah, yeah. It was introduced by Julia Gillard when she was the Minister for Education. It's based on the Canadian system. Canada have done it for many years. And long-term follow-up shows if children enter school developmentally vulnerable on two or more domains in transition, they're very unlikely to complete year ten. This is something Australian education system hasn't come to terms with. It doesn't matter how good the school is, how good the teachers are, on average, if children enter at that level, it's very difficult to get them to year ten, unless they have very intensive support in the first few years. So it's an incredibly important tool. It lays bare the problem we've got nationally in early childhood, but particularly in Aboriginal communities, and it does reflect poverty, disadvantage, intergen- intergenerational trauma, and all of that, and many other issues as well, domestic violence, alcohol abuse, the adverse early childhood events are writ large in those scores, but it's not-
The two thousand and fifteen study that you've referred to, who did that?
That was actually done by the Menzies School of Health Research with the Department of Education. But since then, two thousand and eighteen, I think was done by teachers mainly with less support. So, yeah, it was, it was, Menzies were enlisted in the Northern Territory to help do this properly with the schools, with the teachers. Um, so the teachers were well-trained and well-supported to be able to help do those assessments.
All right, do, do, so do I understand from what you've said that there is, that the data is available, that, uh, if there was someone to distinguish between Aboriginal children and non-Indigenous children, that what you did in two, or what was done in two thousand and fifteen could be done in later years as well?
Yeah, it could be, and it could be done at the level of towns. It could be done at Yundamoo. It could be done at, it could be done in any community that's there. It could be done. You could ask for it.
Yeah, I understand. Thank you very much.
Um.
Yeah, sorry, Mr Power, to take up your time.
No, thank you, thank you, Chair. So, um, the AEDC, the Australian Early Development Census, um, I think you said that occurs every three years? And so if, if there was one in two thousand and eighteen, one would expect there should be one, um, in two thousand and twenty-one?
There should be, unless, unless COVID's gonna stop it from happening, but I don't think it should.
Right. And, uh, and so, uh, as the Chair has said, if, um, the Commonwealth was able to analyse the data for whether it's by identified people who identified as First Nations, or alternatively by identifying places that have a very high proportion of First Nations, um, the effect of the data that you were able to do in two thousand and fifteen could be done for the two thousand and eighteen data.
Absolutely.
And-
And, and it could be done for two thousand and twelve. You can look at the trend over time.
Okay, okay. And so you've mentioned two thousand and twelve, and obviously the same for two thousand and twenty-one, if it hasn't occurred yet. Um, in particular, uh, the, um, the way the data is structured, one would hope if they had that aim to begin with, they could make that disaggregation and identification of First Nations children easier by, um, making sure it was noted in an appropriate way in the first place.
Yeah, and it began in two thousand and nine. So you've got two thousand and nine, two- Yeah. And it began in 2009. So you've got 2009, 2012, 2015, 2018. You've got a time series which could be disaggregated by locality, by aboriginality, and it gives you very useful information. And you'd see where is it progressing, where is it going backwards? We have made progress here, particularly in Alice Springs. I'm not sure we've made progress in remote communities.
Yeah. But I think, I think this issue of being able to identify communities too would probably need to aggregate it up to get a regional perspective, like to see it regionally rather than, you know, data can specifically identify a community. But notwithstanding, notwithstanding that we should still be able to see community level data, but it does, doesn't need to be made public.
And I was, sorry, I was going to, I was going to raise that. So it's actually, you, the issue you're raising is, is an issue of data sovereignty. And is what you're indicating that this sort of data needs to be treated very carefully to avoid stigmatisation of what may be quite small, remote communities? And that could have a very negative effect. But that, an organisation such as yours, an Aboriginal-controlled health organisation, if it were with appropriate safeguards, given access to this information, that, that would be very useful to your health service?
Exactly, Mr Power. I think it would be invaluable.
All right. Now, we, we've talked about this A E D C. And if I could perhaps ask Ms Patterson and Ms Blaine, the ASQ hyphen track, T R A K, would one of you be able to explain how that system works? What, what it is and how it was developed and how it's utilised?
So we don't directly use the ASQ track. It really is a screening measure that's designed for the primary health service so that when children come for their, for a health check at designated ages. And so it's screened by months old. So I think it's up to about three and a half. So the child will come and have their health checked, whether it be with the child health nurse or the GP. And they will go through a set of questions across different developmental domains. So as I said before, cognitive, language, social, emotional and fine and gross motor. And the idea is to determine whether or not the child is meeting milestones that would be expected for their age. And so the child health nurse will sit with the, the parent or the carer and go through specific skills and identify whether or not the child, they can observe that in the clinic at the time, that the child and the family are there, or elicit history from the family as to whether those skills are happening at home and or school, childcare or not as yet. And then they'll get a score at the end of it. And that score will work out whether they're meeting milestones, so developing age appropriately in that area, whether there's some concerns, and that can be slightly below cutoff score, or more concerns which would put them below cutoff and suggest that they need early intervention. We have been developing this pathway where hopefully through the ASQ track, children under the age that they're able to go through and have that will, if there are concerns around their development from the ASQ track score, then they can go straight into that ECI pathway instead of coming in for multidisciplinary assessment through our CIAT service.
Sorry, if I could just pause, sorry, I could just pause there. So the acronym E C E I has been used a couple of times. Could you just explain what the E C E I is?
So that's the pathway under NDIS for early intervention. So the early childhood, early intervention pathway for children that are under seven. The idea is that they would have early intervention in the hope that they won't need a lifelong disability service to provide funding for them to be able to live in, live as independently as possible. So for us, it's getting those children through that ECI pathway so that they can get straight into intervention.
And again, if I could just pause there just for a moment. So I'm going to come back to the issue of access to NDIS. But just perhaps as a marker at this point, i- in brief terms, is it that Congress has achieved the situation that for children under the age of seven, the testing using the ASQ track is sufficient to get NDIS funding for those children? But that once they've got beyond that, that age point, more costly and lengthier assessments are required before NDIS can be funded? Is that roughly the situation?
Yeah, that's right. That's right. And should they need, yeah, should they be identified as needing further assessment because there are ongoing concerns? They will certainly come back through our service for comprehensive multidisciplinary assessment.
Okay.
I think, sorry, I think that isn't the distinction is that it doesn't require a diagnosis?
Yeah. So the ASQ track identifies developmental delay, not a specific diagnosis, which this team does. And to answer to your earlier question, the ASQ track has been developed based on the ASQ. So the ASQ is an internationally recognised tool. It stands for the Ages and Stages Questionnaire. It's used all over the world. It's validated in many countries since years till children at six years old. And it's used in primary healthcare settings all over the world. But it wasn't validated for Aboriginal children. And there's all sorts of cross-cultural issues in using a mainstream tool to assess these areas of development. So Dr Anita De Prano, who's a developmental paediatrician at the University of Melbourne, she worked initially on her own and then later with us to validate this tool. And they've validated at certain ages, not all the ages. So they've only validated six months, nine months, twelve months, eighteen months, two years, three years and four years. And you've got to do one month either side. So if, for that, at those ages, we can do a very accurate assessment with a tool that's been validated for Aboriginal children, which will pick up developmental delay very accurately. And that's the trigger. That plus a functional impairment narrative will trigger an early childhood, early intervention plan. And it's triggering it within 24 hours or even a couple of days. But then the trouble is there's a very significant delay for the planning meeting. And until the planning meeting's been happened, you don't actually get a plan. So there is a suggestion to address that in our statement, which is to have an early childhood, early intervention preliminary plan? Or what's the word for it? Anyway, they're, they're talking about offering an amount of money, say $20,000 straight upfront before the planning meetings happen so the child can access immediate care and further assessment while the planning meeting is being organised, which is taking more than two months. Because these kids, they need help quickly, you know? And the quicker they get help, the quicker you can turn around and abnormal trajectory. Because there are critical periods in, in development. And once you go too far beyond those critical periods, you don't get it back again.
Thank you. And so ASQ track was developed in conjunction with Congress itself?
Yes, it was, with Dr Anita De Prano.
And one of the advantages, I think we heard from Ms Blaine, was that it doesn't need a clinical paediatrician, clinical neuropsychologist like she and Ms Patterson. What, what sort of people are able to administer the ASQ track in a culturally appropriate way?
Trained health professionals can do it. Aboriginal health practitioners, nurses.
Aboriginal family support.
Aboriginal family support workers, yeah. They need training. It's not two or three days training. You've got to have a, you know, you've got to know what you're doing and you've got to be able to do it properly and reliably in a way that's validated. And, you know, I think very soon we'll probably move to accreditation and the NDIS might not accept this being done by non-accredited workers, which is a reasonable thing because it has significant implications, obviously. If you do it, if you do it well and do it properly and you're going to know the limitations of the tool. But it can be done very easily by the primary healthcare team. Not, you wouldn't use doctors to do it. You'd use nurses, Aboriginal health workers, Aboriginal family support workers, Aboriginal caseworkers. And it can be done reliably and well.
Can we take a couple of steps back so that someone like me, who perhaps isn't quite familiar with these tests, might follow where they fit? ASQ, you said, is an internationally recognised approach.
Yep.
Is that used generally for Australian children, whether Indigenous or non-Indigenous?
Yes, it is. It used to be done, you know, Australia used to have a system of infant and child, child and infant nurses, you know, across the country, and they used to do it. Now, they've, well, a lot of those businesses have been defunded. They still exist in Victoria and some of the bigger states.
How is it, sorry, how is the determination made that any child should be assessed in accordance with the ASQ protocol? If I can describe it that way. Who determines?
Well, a GP would or infant nurse. So when a child comes in for their immunisations at six months, nine months, twelve months, eighteen months, in the mainstream, this probably isn't done unless someone's worried. It's not done, it's not done routinely at a population level in the mainstream. But if you've got a population where you're expecting to find one in five children with significant issues, you've got an obligation to do it at a population level. So, so in Aboriginal communities, it should be done. And in, in all disadvantaged communities, in pockets of disadvantage in the cities, it should be done on all children. It shouldn't just, it's not an issue, it's an issue.
So the, the argument you're making, and this is what I wanted to understand, is that for, as you described, at the mainstream, it's okay to depend upon someone being worried and taking it to a GP or someone else to determine whether the child needs to be assessed in this way? But where you have communities such as First Nations communities with a high proportion of children likely to benefit from this assessment, your view is that this should be done across the entirety of the cohort of children?
Yeah, that's our view. And there is already recognition of that. There's a Medicare-funded child health check item for Aboriginal and Torres Strait and the children. So this fits beautifully. You really, these days, you shouldn't do a child health check without doing an ASQ track. It's almost unethical now because it's the ASQ track that will lead to interventions much more so. You know, in the old days, we used to weigh kids, measure them, all that sort of stuff, look for skin, and we still do all that. It's important. But much more important now is to, in that child health check process, make sure the emotional, cognitive and language development particularly are properly assessed, not just their physical development and whether they've got a heart murmur or, you know, skin disorders, those sorts of things. They're all still done.
If, if, if Medicare provides for all Aboriginal children to have this process, why isn't it universal now?
It's not, the Medicare item doesn't require a validated tool to be used. In the Medicare child health check, you can do a developmental screen in the old way that I was talking about before, pretty much, what would you call it? Just a few questions. But it's a pretty rudimentary way of assessing. It's, you know, you ask how many, you know, a two-year-old child, you want to know how many words they're saying. You want to know what their motor, what they're doing in a gross motorway. So you do ask things that will pick up gross levels of abnormality, but not in a sensitive way that's able to pick up children with lesser levels of delay, which is what this tool really can do. So it's not required in that Medicare item. It probably should become standard, that this is something that we do across the board. But then you'll get a lot of pushback from, a lot of remedial nurses will say, we're so busy, we're so overworked, and we're only here for a couple of months and then we're moving on. They'll argue that they don't have the time and capacity to do it, but we're trying to say, look, there's nothing more important. If a child comes into the clinic, as well as giving them an immunisation, they have to have this done because it's a gateway to a whole, we're finding now finally, it is a gateway to early childhood intervention plans and further assessment and really, really important interventions in that child's life.
All right. We better allow Mr Power the occasional intervention in this hearing.
Well, thanks, Chair. And well, flowing from that, one of the things that arose in my mind was that for this ASQ track to work, there really has to be trust between the child's parents or carer and the person they're speaking to. Would you agree with that?
Yeah, yes. Yeah, I agree with that, Mr Power.
And is that, you, you deal with this in your statement, but is that why an organisation such as Congress or Danila Dilba in Darmun is so important? Because there is that sense of trust from an Aboriginal-controlled health organisation?
Absolutely. Because the, those families and those kids come to our service on a regular basis. So this is where, you know, we, we see, we had a demographer come and look at our data and that person said that, you know, we see, could easily say we see every, you know, Aboriginal person in our health service delivery area. And that's what Aboriginal community-controlled health services do. You know, that's why they've been established, because of that ability to build that trust with our own, with our own mob.
And I think, sorry, we do get different information compared to a mainstream health provider. When we have families talking with, with Congress, with an Aboriginal family support worker there, as a representative of Congress, easily identifiable, they tell us different information than what they're willing to, to talk to, to a mainstream doctor at the hospital about. So we do have some pretty good evidence that it is working better to do this within an Aboriginal community-controlled health service.
And the other question I had was, Dr Boffa, you, you said that it was validated essentially up to age four. But the ASQ itself, the internationally used base model, was validated up to age six. Is it something where you think there, there would be a benefit in having it validated, at least for that upper age limit of six, to try and catch anybody who hadn't reached, you know, population-wide approach at age six?
One of the, one of the most important uses of research funding should be to fund Anita De Prano to continue to validate, it should be validated to match every age of the ASQ. That'll help us. Because really, if a child comes into our service at 11 months, well, no, that's a bad pick at 12 months. We can't do it. We have to wait till 18 months. It's, they've, they've gone past the 12-month tool. The next one is 18 months. So even though they come to our service, we actually can't, we don't have a valid tool to use at that age or, or at 18 months. Or so they come in at two and a half. We don't have a tool at two and a half, whereas the ASQ does. So we need to continue to validate across the whole spectrum of the equivalent of the ASQ. That would be very helpful.
And I would like to add that I'm seeing children, generally, particularly those kids, that they have very obvious delays. And we would say that they're unassessable due to not having developed enough language yet, but they've gone past the ASQ track age. We then have to engage families in our service to gather some information. And so resources are being spent on a child that clearly needs to go through that ECI pathway. But they need somebody to document the, where they're at at the moment. And because the ASQ track doesn't go beyond four, we might have a five-year-old that's very clearly delayed, isn't at the level of ability yet that they can engage in our multidisciplinary assessment. But we're having to use our resources to gather some information for that to happen. So I think that it's certainly between four and six is definitely needed to catch those kids that are not yet ready for assessment. But CIATs is probably not the best place serviced. It should be, we, yeah, exactly. It should be through that primary healthcare network.
And you could make a recommendation on that one? So, sorry, Dr Boffa, I missed that. I apologise.
A recommendation on that one to fully validate the ASQ track would be very, very helpful.
All right. And another acronym arose then, and that was the CYATS or C Y A T S. Now, I'm going to come to that further, but could you just at the moment, one of, I'll perhaps ask Ms Patterson, what is CYATS?
We use CIATs, which is the Child and Youth Assessment and Treatment Service. So we are a multidisciplinary team as part of Congress. So there's two neuropsychologists, Tanner and I, two speech pathologists, two occupational therapists, two clinical case coordinators, an Aboriginal family support worker and a team leader. And we also have in-kind support from the paediatrics at Alice Springs Hospital. And that's CIATs.
Great. So as I said, I'll return. Great. Um so as I said, I'll return back to that. Um but if I can turn to the two of you, that is Miss Patterson and Miss Blaine. Um, as part of this general uh topic of early childhood intervention. At um paragraphs, um, uh, 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 sorry. At paragraphs, um, uh, forty-five uh and forty-six of your statement. You talk about um barriers to um treatment uh and, and or support. Uh, could you just speak about what, what barriers you, you see exist there um for First Nations children? And, and just to put it in context, in paragraph forty-five, you note that um there's developmental delay, which is. Uh able to be seen. Um it may or may not mean that there's an underlying disability. And of course, one, one hopes from what's been described that um those developmental delays can be. Um dealt with in an appropriate way such that they don't result in some long-term uh problem throughout childhood. Uh and it's noted that it's most effective in the first five years. But it's really paragraph forty-six. Where you talk about some of the barriers, um particularly, you note in the final uh sentence. Congress has observed that access to childcare and early learning centres is particularly difficult for children who are in kinship care arrangements. Um, and so could you just speak to that and, and explain why that is the case?
Yeah, um, really, uh, I guess, access to childcare in Alice Springs in general for anyone is actually quite challenging. Um, there are long waitlists. And so I think if a child is um in out-of-home care. Um, then the, there are many childcare centres, but the waitlist to access that is quite lengthy. Um for those kids that are in kinship care, um not necessarily accessing childcare. Um because they're being cared for by family. Um and so may not be aware of, uh, you know, for instance, Congress has. Um its own childcare um and preschool that um Aboriginal children here can access. But it's whether or not they know that these programs are available, um whether they have transport or know that there's transport support and. Um to be able to get kids um along to these programs. Um. So I think in, in that sense, it can be challenging to um access. The appropriate programs and services that are available, whether the, yeah, the awareness is there that, that they um can access these programs. Uh and then being able to do that consistently. Um I think just having a child with uh developmental delays. Requires um significant extra load um to be able to just get organised and get going for the day. And so being able to operate on um the usual timeframes, you know, getting a child to childcare by a certain time in the morning. Um if you've got a child that's having significant emotional meltdowns because of, um, you know, something's happened in the morning, then it can be, again. Um whether that family has the appropriate supports that allow them to get the child ready um in a timely way that then um. Then supported to get to the childcare can be a significant undertaking. Um and so, yeah, if they don't have. Those supports in place to, to help the family to do that, sometimes it can just be an impossible task.
And i- is there a solution to the problem? Because obviously, one of the fundamental um issues is trying to give families support. Such as a child doesn't go into out-of-home care. Do, do you, with your team, see that there are some practical steps that can be taken?
Y- yeah, do you wanna?
Yeah, I think um the availability of places in um in childcare and in early intervention programs is. Um just having more places available would make a big difference. Um the capacity for a family to be going through the, the application process. Um and then to be told they're on a waitlist that they then need to keep following up on, um ongoing, especially if they move. Or there's another crisis that comes up. The expectation on families to be doing that is, is very high. Uh whereas if we simply had more places in um preschool and um childcare and early intervention programs. It would make that a lot easier on families.
And you've mentioned that Congress itself has a, a, a preschool, is that correct?
Oh, it's a preschool readiness program, so it's not a preschool.
Sorry, I apologize. Yep.
No, that's all right. Um we, we, we probably cause that confusion.
Yeah.
Um, so it's, yeah, it's a preschool readiness program. So we make sure that, that three- and four-year-olds. Um kids have had the child health check, um any uh developmental um vulnerabilities. That have been identified, we then put them in this intensive um preschool readiness program. So that when they are ready to, to get, you know, to enroll uh into preschool. Um they can maximise their learning opportunities once they get there.
And is part of the aim of that, uh, what was being discussed earlier about a, a rich environment for a child at that, those key ages? Um, rich environment in terms of um uh play with other children, uh, uh, receiving um language. Uh receiving art, all of those things in a culturally appropriate way. Is that, is that what the aim of that program is?
Exactly, Mr. Power. And we've also got a, another um program called the Child Health and Development. Um program. So it is based on um the abusidarian um evidence around. Uh enriched um caregiving, um in uh conversational reading and um play games. As well as, uh, what is it, Boff? The.
Language priority.
Language priority. Um and so that is another, um, I guess, a, a pro, pro, evidence-based early childhood program. Uh where we could, um, you know, put kids into this program when they've been identified as having. Developmental vulnerabilities.
But that has a waiting list of about forty kids at the moment, and it's only for fifty children, and that's for non-working families. So a lot of these kids who are in non-working families, they're not, they're not even eligible for mainstream childcare because their parents aren't working. And they're the kids that need um centre-based a program like this. They need extra stimulation. They need extra support. Player-based learning, interaction with their, being read to all the time makes a huge difference. Makes it. The randomized controlled trials show that if you do that for children six months to three, it makes a thirty-point IQ difference. So you're talking about the difference between a child at the lower end of the developmental spectrum to getting back to average. So we've got one of those centres, but we've only got one, and there's a waitlist for that. And part of what's in our submission is the history. We thought the NDI were going to fund it. And they sounded until, you know, I don't know, when was it that we realised they went? Probably earlier this.
Years ago.
Yeah, that, that all fell over. But.
Yeah.
Centres like that are absolutely vital for children in disadvantaged families. They, they only need to go for about twenty hours a week. It's not like they're at home most of the time. It's only about twenty hours a week is enough to make a big difference. Before they go to preschool. This is well before they go to preschool. So we've got one of those centres. It's been evaluated twice. It's very effective, but it's got a waiting list of about forty children.
And so when you say it's a waiting list of forty children, that's um First Nations children living in Alice Springs. Who, uh, if, if there were spaces, wo- would be there. Is that, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, that's, that's it. From non-working families. There's a different waiting list. If you're in a working family. You're on the mainstream childcare waiting list. What's the waiting list?
Um I've had friends who wait anywhere from twelve to eighteen months for a place in childcare. So generally, people will put their child on a waitlist when they're pregnant, um in the hope that by the time their child gets to between eight and twelve months. That there'll be a place available.
And so.
Can I just, can I just clarify something else? Um I take it from what you have been saying. That you're proposing programs um or strategies to address the issues of. Possible developmental delay and associated with that possible disabilities, intellectual disabilities. Of all First Nations children. Have I got that right?
Yes, yeah.
How, how does this, okay.
Systems approach.
Okay. How does this relate to out-of-home care?
Well, we are seeing many children who are in out-of-home care in kinship. So um many of the issues are similar um across. And um where the kids we're seeing in out-of-home care um are presenting with significant developmental disabilities. So we're wanting, one, to prevent kids from having to go into out-of-home care. But knowing that they may still be presenting with um similar challenges. So that's why we see it um, yeah, as a systems approach.
But are, are you suggesting that there is a causal relationship between First Nations children in out-of-home care? And the extent of their developmental delays or intellectual disability? Or is this something where, we're, we're talking here about children in out-of-home care. Being in essentially the same position as First Nations children who are not in out-of-home care?
Yeah, that's it. The latter.
Um so we certainly see that um children who have undiagnosed disabilities are not offered the same level of support. Um so if a family is not offered the same level of support uh for their uh child with a disability. It's much more likely that that family will be um, have a notification for something like neglect. Um, you know, because they can't meet the care needs of that child because the care needs are higher. So certainly, um, we need, do need to have equitable access. Um so that um the ability to provide the appropriate level of care isn't a consideration um for children being removed.
Hmm.
But just to give you one.
And Dr. Boffa, Dr. Boffa, sorry, just before you go on, um because we've got Ausland interpreters who do an amazing job, but you speak very quickly. Uh, so could you just slow down just a tiny bit?
Well, to give you, so really.
Sorry, I, I want to assure you that this is not the first time this issue has arisen in the Royal Commission. So you are not alone.
Okay. So children living in poverty have, uh, have, have really got extra needs. And so if you look at studies that show children who grow up in a family where one or both parents have a university degree. Compared to children growing up in a family where neither parent have year twelve, by age four, they've been exposed to thirty-two million more words. So there's a massive difference going on in terms of the level of stimulation, language. And being read to is the most important way you promote brain development. So the difference, the gap you're talking about, even children, children living in poverty in a house that neither parent has year twelve. Without extra stimulation are not going to develop in the same way as children in a household where they're just being bombarded. Every day with conversational language, with being read to, with regular routines, you know, all of that is. So you've got to find ways, and we're not talking about, you don't need to remove children to achieve this. You've got to provide extra supports. Which is what our Child Health and Development Centre is all about. Children go there, they're read to, there's learning games, conversational reading. They're well, they get an iron-rich meal to try and overcome problems with iron deficiency, which also affects brain development. That approach at a population level would help prevent a significant proportion of children who go on. And with developmental delay or even, even more sev- severe impairment, impairment. So we've been doing that since two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and seventeen with one centre. And there's very few centres like it across the country. Um and that is a really important program. And it really, and that becomes a place where you can have speech pathologists and occupational therapists go into that centre on top of the normal staff. And access children and their parents to do interventions, which you couldn't do at home. Because the home environment is not a place where you can actually meaningfully do that for a lot of these children. Home's overcrowded. There's a lot of people there. You don't get the space. So the centre provides a, a locus for a range of other services and programs to interact with parents and these children. But we've only got one set centre.
And i- in terms of linking it back to First Nations children in out-of-home care, um. You've mentioned that uh, that there's a, a real difficulty for non-working parents. Uh to have their children in, in the um preparation for preschool program that, that Congress runs. Are those parents, um, sorry, are the children of those parents in the experience of Congress. A greater risk of having their children removed into care a- as a group, that is, parents who aren't working?
Hmm. Yeah, absolutely. There's no doubt about that. It's one of the big determin, unemployment. Educational disadvantages is one of the big determinants of whether children do or don't get removed.
Um, and so.
Oh, sorry, I'll just add that it, it can be extremely challenging um when there's not a specialised program available for a child with developmental delay. Or disability, um for parents to work because of the high care needs that are involved. And often, I mean, this will happen um for, for foster carers in, who are caring for children um in out-of-home care. Um that working can be extremely difficult because they're constantly getting phone calls to come and pick their children up. Um because they're in a mainstream program, for instance. And so if there's behaviour, aggression, um. They just can't tolerate full days, for instance, then um even for the kids that we're seeing that are in primary school. Um maybe on reduced attendance programs because um they can't tolerate full days at school. Um so it can be extremely challenging to hold. Consistent work when you're having to tell um your manager or your boss uh that, oh, I've got to go, the school's called me, or the childcare's called me to come and um. Take the, the child home.
And y- y- what you've said there echoes what you've said in paragraph fifty of your statement. You, you, you say. Um disability contributes to a higher level of need and a child with disability requires a higher level of supervision. If a family does not have the resources or access to supports, this may be perceived as neglect and increase the risk of removal. However, um CYCATS is not seeing this as a direct cause of removal. Um, uh, but. From what you've said, um, in what you've just said, and also in paragraph fifty of your statement. Um, would it be correct to say that, um, that in a sense, almost respite? That the parents would have from children with high needs, um would benefit both the parental and child relationship. As well as the child's development?
Certainly, and especially if the child is going to a care situation where the educators understand um their difficulties. And that's where for the children under, you know, four and under, that's where the ASQ track is really important. So that they have a very clear understanding of where the child is at developmentally. Because I think that lack of education for the carers, for the people working with the child, is one of the biggest contributors to um the secondary. Issues that we see for young people with developmental delay or disability. And, and that's, you know, around their mental health and their development of self-esteem. And self-concept and um without that really clear understanding, it's easy, often very easy to say. That's a child that's just being naughty or defiant or oppositional. And we, we constantly see these labels. Um and we do refer to it in our submission where particularly for children in out-of-home care, where we're seeing. The, the biggest age range for us, for those children is between ten and twelve years, years old. And that's likely a product of CATS. Only coming into play in two thousand and eighteen. Um but it means that they've had years and years and years. Of reinforcement around their behaviour, um being oppositional, defiant, not complying, being naughty. Um but it, it's their carers, their family, their education. Nobody's had a really clear understanding until they have these really important assessments.
Um, and uh i- is it the case that, a- at least in some cases. Those things that arise out of a disability, um because they are difficult uh to, to deal with and treat. Um are seen as an inability of parents to appropriately care for a child?
Definitely. So we, we absolutely see um parents who are, I, I would say, doing their best. Um with a child with a disability, uh where that child do, does require full-time supervision, twenty-four hours a day, cannot be left unsupervised. For a moment to, to kind of walk away and make a cup of tea, um where the child will exhibit some maladaptive behaviour related to their disability. Where um it then becomes a case where um there's a notifications made to child protection. Um, you know, they might come into contact with the police. Um we definitely see that happening um because a child does need that extra level of supervision. Um that is more than what we would expect any family to be providing without disability-specific support.
Hmm.
So if we can then move to um CYATS, um, w- we will hear this afternoon from uh Dr. Webster. Of um Danila Dilba, who um speaks about the Child and Youth Assessment and Treatment Service. As being a, a best, a best practice model that his service would like to emulate. Um, uh, could I perhaps ask, um, Ms. Archie? Um, how did, how did this system, um, that is. um, how did, how did this system, um, that is SEATs come into being? Because it obviously just didn't happen, it needed something that, that Congress focused on, how did it come to being?
Uh, initially through a partnership with Patches, um, with Commonwealth funding that went to that organisation. And a lot of lobbying of the Northern Territory Government to get three hundred thousand from territory families, um, which they continue to fund. But over time, um, since its inception, we've been able to then, uh, get, you know, additional funding through all the lobbying that we've been doing and advocacy. And the issue there is that you've got multiple sources of funding and not one sort of, you know, one sort of government department that funds this service. Um, and we know we've seen in, you know, studies that have been done, a report that was done by Lowitcher Institute, our national research, Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander Research Institution, a major report that was called, um, um, what was it, both burden, burden, burden in reporting? And that's because of all the different little funding sources that come through our organisations, through our primary healthcare services across the country. And this is another prime example of that, where we've got, you know, bits and pieces of money coming from here, coming from there to make up what we've got, which is, you know, as you've heard today and hearing from others, a fabulous service that's making a difference to young people, you know, and children and their families. If that's one thing that the commission, the Royal Commission could help us on, is to sort out the sort of way in which a service like this is funded.
And also in a remote area, you can employ staff on a two-year contract at most, which is incredibly, we, we staff on permanent contracts, their turnover is about twenty-two percent. Staff on limited-term contracts, their turnover is about forty percent. So if you're gonna, we're lucky to have people who, who really have a lot of faith in Donna's ability to maintain funding, because the funding runs out every two years, every three years, it's not recurrent. And so that creates a whole level of uncertainty in trying to retain staff in a remote area, which it just makes it all that much harder.
And just, uh, to touch on that, um, is it the case that it is in fact quite difficult to fill positions in remote areas, even at the best of times?
Yeah.
Yes, absolutely. And when you look at now in the context of COVID and workforce issues that have just exacerbated and magnified it.
Hmm.
I think when, when we recruited for Hannah's position, um, we did actually have five applicants for that position. Um, so we do struggle with some disciplines more so than others. But we have had the case here where when we are advertising and when a position is funded, we can fill it.
Yeah, that's important.
The, the staff, the people who want to work here, they do exist, um, and we can recruit them.
And we did say at the Mental Health Royal Commission or the Senate Inquiry, that the big problem is if you create salaried positions at a reasonable level, you'll get people.
Hmm.
But there are, the, the, the health system doesn't have salaried positions outside the, the public hospitals in the major cities. So we've done that, we've scrounged together the money, created salary positions, and we're getting applicants. You know, people throw their hands up and say, no one will come, but there actually aren't positions, salary positions, people won't come for private practice in areas like this, it's, it's too big a risk. And you're not, and you're not gonna be able to service the, the most disadvantaged children, their families can't pay. So there's no private practice market, there has to be grant funding for salaried positions and then we'll be able to get people. And that's five, five neuropsychists, it's pretty amazing to apply.
For one position.
For one position in a really remote area.
Um, and so to put it in terms of a thin market, uh, Alice Springs and the surrounding areas are very thin markets for private practice. But what you're saying is that Congress or organisations like Congress who create a salaried position can fill that thin market gap by having a, an salaried employee?
Yeah.
Yes, and also offering the, um, the network around that salaried employee so that they can do good practice in this space. So doing good practice as a neuropsychologist in a remote area with Aboriginal children as a private practitioner would be extremely difficult. The reason we're able to do what we do is because we're part of Congress with the, the access to an Aboriginal family support worker. Um, when I've discussed with colleagues, um, doing private practice in an area like this, um, they would be quite reluctant to do so because of the high chance of doing, um, malpractice.
Yeah.
If they're not working within an organisation like Congress.
Right, um, and, uh, if I can then turn, uh, to, um, SEATs with regard to children in out of home care, um, is, is part of, um, SEATs work with children in out of home care?
Yeah, it is, yeah.
Could you just explain what role you play with children who are in out of home care in Alice Springs and in, if we're applicable in remote areas?
Um, so SEATs is funded to service, um, children living, uh, First Nations children living in Alice Springs. So while there is certainly, um, we've received phone calls and emails about assessments for children in remote areas, we just don't have the funding or capacity, staff capacity to do that, um, at this time. Um, so we're servicing children only in Alice Springs. Um, for those children in out of home care, we, um, our team leader receives referrals from territory families, um, generally, um, from their case manager. Um, but at the moment, there is work around cross-checking databases because, um, we only had thirteen children from territory families on our waitlist. Um, uh, so through that cross-check, they've identified potentially another twenty-five children that should have been referred at some point and haven't.
And sorry, could I just pause there? So what you're saying there is that a certain number were referred directly by territory families, but Congress itself was able to check, uh, children, First Nations children who'd been patients of Congress with children who are now in out of home care and from Congress's records of those children as patients saw that they should be in fact being looked after by SEATs?
No, sorry, this is, um, our team leader, Gail Simpson, working directly with territory families to do a cross-check of their children who are, um, First Nations children and who are in out of home care. Uh, and so that territory families have identified an additional, um, I think around twenty-five children that should be on our waitlist. So, um, those referrals need to be made, um.
So that was Congress proactively talking to territory families to say, can you look at your files for First Nations children to s- to see if there are more children?
That's right, um, because we do have a certain number of territory families funded children that we need to assess, um, throughout the year. Um, so quarterly, our team leader will do a check on kind of how we are tracking to meet that by the end of the year, because obviously these assessments can't just happen overnight, we have to do a lot of foreplanning, um, to allow enough time across the year. We work in a six-weekly cycle of, um, getting a caseload of children. Um, so, yeah, Gail will do that work to identify where we're at in meeting that target and, um, whether or not, um, but how many kids are currently on our waitlist from territory families that need to be assessed. When we have referrals from territory families or any, any referral source and it is a child in care, so if the referral came from a paediatrician or a school teacher, if they are a child in out of home care, they get special actual preferential treatment through SEATs. So they come to the top of our waitlist, um, and they are generally seen as a priority. Um, and that's, um, discussed, how those children are prioritised is something that Gail, um, proactively determines with territory families.
Now, with these children in out of home care, um, are, are they children that, um, Congress has seen before? Um, uh, or are they sometimes children that Congress has never seen before that referral?
Generally, they will have been through a GP clinic, had health checks, um. So, yeah, usually, um, that, that, yeah, they would be clients of Congress.
Right, um, and I think, uh, I'll just direct this to Dr Boffa, is, is it correct that the, um, ASQ track system really only came into operation in about twenty eighteen, is that right?
Yeah, even, yeah, eighteen, nineteen, and it's taken us a while, even Congress has committed, you know, from the CEO down, we're committed to this. But even at that level, it has taken us a while to, to systematise it and start to make it. Uh, so we're, we're still only probably doing an ASQ track on fifty percent of the children every year that should have it done, so we've still got to do work. So, yeah, that's only, it's, it's a growing, it's growing within our own service, both in town and remote. And we've had to get train the trainers, you've got to have people trained to train others, and that's been a challenge and COVID hasn't helped that. But we've got two staff now trained as trainers who can train others. Um, so it's, yeah, it's taken us a while, because there hasn't been much institutional support for this, it's us doing it off our own backs, you know? Um, it's not like there's a system-wide commitment to making this happen across the system, and that's what we need.
And we're so serious about it that we established a, a, um, dedicated child health sort of position in our continuous quality improvement unit, um, to really get a, you know, a system approach throughout Congress around the training, around, um, you know, looking at, uh, on a regular basis, how many ASQ tracks we're doing, dealing with clinics on a regular basis.
And we also had to make the connection between, there was a time when we were doing ASQ tracks, but it wasn't leading to anything. And that makes practitioners very, very hesitant, because they don't like identifying significant issues that doesn't lead somewhere. It's only in the last few months that we finally cracked the ECEI problem, that was a major barrier. So you've got to make sure that children that have got issues rapidly get a plan and get support and get interventions to make it ethical.
Can I, and you've mentioned that, uh, ethical issue, that if you're doing this sort of assessment, uh, but are unable to do anything, that's, that's a real problem. Um, could e- either yourself or Ms Ochi just briefly explain what, um, success was suc- was achieved in having the NDIS, um, recognise this and, and, and what the result in a practical terms wa- was?
Well, we got forty children finally, um, you know, getting access, uh, uh, being assessed and then being able to, to get on a ECEI plan in order to get, um, access to much-needed interventions. Um, and I was only asking Dr Boffa how many kids we've got out there, which is, what, about under seven? Up to seven, about approximately one thousand one hundred. Um, if we were to do, get all those assessments done, I'm sure we'd be, we'd have a lot more that would be able to, should be able to access this ECEI programme. But I think the issue for us is how do we make it seamless? So it's not something that we've got to sort of, um, you know, take ages to, to get these kids accessing much-needed services. So I think what Dr Boffa mentioned earlier, although this has been a success after a lot of, you know, four years of, of trying to get access to that much-needed resource in the NDIS, is the issue now about making sure that those planning meetings are now happening, um, in a much more timely way.
Um, now, to go back, uh, to, um, Ms Patterson and Ms Blaine, um, focusing particularly on First Nations children in out of home care. Um, are you seeing, or is your team seeing, um, children who have, um, a fetal alcohol syndrome disorder, um, being picked up or recognised, um, only when they're, uh, uh, only at a relatively late stage?
Certainly, um, I think that seeing the majority of children in out of home care are generally between the ages of ten and twelve through our service. Um, but we are a zero to eighteen service, so we can see children up, um, or young people up to the age of eighteen. Um, generally, the split for Amelia and I is I prefer to see children under eleven and she prefers to see the, um.
I prefer to see the big ones.
Yeah, uh, older, so, um, but certainly we're not seeing referrals. And this may be a product of, um, this, the service only being around since two thousand and eighteen. So prior to that, the options for assessment, um, particularly comprehensive assessment that involves neuropsychology. Um, we do see children who have been exposed to, um, alcohol in pregnancy in out of home care, um, but we, I think what's more concerning for us is we see reference to fetal alcohol spectrum disorder, um, in First Nations children in out of home care, um, where that's been referenced previously, but, um, that when you work with families directly from, um, us as in Congress staff working with, directly with, um, families, even when the children is in out of home care, we do everything in our power to make contact with biological family. Um, we find that many times we're coming across families that say, I definitely didn't drink during pregnancy. Um, and there's, you know, documentation when you do the work. So there's this label for the child without assessment having been done or without proper consideration of where that information has come from. Um, and we see that quite often for children in out of home care where the label of FASD is being put on them without the assessment and without appropriate research into whether or not that prenatal alcohol exposure even occurred.
Um, and so what you're identifying there is the potential for assumptions leading to a misdiagnosis of FASD.
Certainly, and we see that across, um, if it's been mentioned in, say, a medical letter, um, we've, we're seeing this kind of imputed diagnosis through education, um, where children are being, um, I guess their education plans are set up with the idea that they have a FASD diagnosis. Um, and then when we come involved and do the comprehensive assessment, which includes the history taking, um, we're having to go back and provide re-education around whether or not they even meet criteria for a developmental diagnosis. Um, and if they do, what the actual cause, um, of their disability is and explaining then how, um, the school environment, for instance, or the, the out-of-home care environment should be set up, um, in a, in a way to best, um, best support the young person or child.
So do those children sometimes have ADHD rather than FASD, or they have nothing?
Um, so they, they may have a, um, genetic testing may be done and they have, um, a genetic condition which explains that they, um, might have had an acquired brain injury or traumatic brain injury that happened in, um, early infancy or early childhood that wasn't, um, identified. Um, it may be that they need investigations for epilepsy, um, whether that's an underlying cause. Or for some kids, we have a label, um, unspecified neurodevelopmental disorder where they have a collection of impairments across several areas. Um, but there is no known cause at this stage as to why they're presenting the way they are. Um, and that certainly is an accepted diagnosis under NDIS. So, um, for some children, that is the, the diagnostic label that they get at the end of the assessment.
But you are finding at age ten or eleven, who for the first time ever do get a diagnosis of FASD?
Definitely, yeah.
Is diagnosed that late compared to seven, what are the implications for the child?
We're seeing children all the way up to sixteen and seventeen who, um, have a diagnosis of FASD that hasn't been identified any earlier. Um, so the, the services simply weren't there. Um, so when we're, um, seeing those older children, often they have been in a stable foster care, um, placement. Um, and the kind of things that foster parents say to me is that I've been asking for this assessment, I've known they've needed this assessment the whole time they've been in my care, it just hasn't existed.
Hmm.
Um, and so we are doing first-time FASD diagnoses at sixteen and seventeen years of age. After that, um, you know, from the time a child is eighteen years of age, they're no longer eligible for our service. So I would presume there's certainly undiagnosed FASD and undiagnosed neurodevelopmental disability more broadly in adults that we have missed, um, entirely, um, because they've aged out of our.
And that comes to my next, uh, well, my final question, in fact, um, uh, as paediatric, um, uh, clinical neuropsychologist, um, um, Mrs Patterson and Ms Blaine, um, do you think that there would be value in First Nations children who are in out of home care? So hence already disadvantaged, um, having it, um, mandatory that territory families, um, arrange that, that those children receive a multidisciplinary assessment at the time or shortly after they enter out of home care?
Think mandatory is a, is a, a difficult, if a child isn't in the right place to be assessed.
Hmm.
Um, so we're often seeing children who are at the point of removal are quite traumatised um, and can sometimes have quite challenging behaviours. So at the point of removal, they go from placement to placement to placement, um, and are moved three or four times. At that point, um, is there something going on for that child, uh, a neurodevelopmental disability or disorder? It's quite possible there is, but with the, the upheaval that they've experienced, doing those assessments might not be timely. Um, and could not, it's possible that could not be in the best interests of that child. It could misidentify, um, difficulties that are circumstantial. Um, so I think every child that's in out of home care, they probably should have an assessment at some point when clinically indicated.
Hmm.
Um, but mandatory at the point they enter care, um,
Um, but mandatory at the point they enter care, um, you know, might, might not be the most helpful way for us to do that.
And I think what would probably be more useful um as a mandatory um base level system to be put in place is that all carers uh go through appropriate training that allow them to understand typical development for, at, as a first and then understand um neurodevelopmental disability. And because we know that for these kids, the environment is the key to ensuring that regardless of what's happened to them, that their environment is set up in order um for them to be well understood and to thrive in that environment. So certainly we can see lots of challenging behaviours that I said earlier identified as oppositional, defiant, non-compliant. But what we know is that's a child's way of communicating that they're not coping, that the expectations are too great. Um, and that something in the environment is not working for them. And by having that education, which we come across many carers who, they say, yes, I've heard of, whether it be fetal alcohol spectrum disorder or any other type of neurodevelopmental disability, um but I don't, don't know what to do in response to that. Um, and with the lag in for some kids in getting assessments, they've kind of had to trial and error over the years to see what works. And so generally by the time they get to us, they will often have a system in place, um routines, structures set up um that allow them uh to best, um, yeah, to cope, I guess, and to put, put things into place that allow the child to function at the best level that they can day to day. But what we also find out is that burnout is um extreme, that their mental health is not looked after. Um, that the opportunity for respite often sends back a child that is dysregulated. And so the, the time that they got for a break was actually pointless, not worth it. Um, because it's not necessarily going to be with somebody that the child knows, that's trusted, that's a slow transition. Um, so, yeah, I think that supporting the carers um to know typical development and then to know what to do if a child isn't tracking in that way is probably more useful because it means that they're going to be geared to provide the best level of care from the moment the child comes, whether they're ready for assessment or not.
But you do think that it, all children out of home care at some point should be assessed?
I think it does make sense as, as clinically indicated and with the, the assessment that is indicated for that child. Sometimes we presume it is a cognitive or a neurodevelopmental disability when what they might need as the higher priority is a mental health assessment as well. So yes, some form of assessment does make sense, but targeting that to the child, I think.
And I think we're seeing kids that are coming from out of home care and they haven't necessarily had their, you know, twelve monthly um child health check. So I think even that as a minimum starting point, so that the general practitioner is well aware that the placement has changed, where the child's at, um and they can be the key person um that the family can go to in the interim to work out whether or not an assessment is indicated. I think if a child's settled, the school understands them, they're performing well. Um, we wouldn't necessarily assess a child if it's not clinically indicated. Um, but certainly if the contrary was happening and the GP is recognising that, then our referral, the referral system into See Ads is very simple. Um, and so that can be done by the um a teacher at school or it can be done by the case manager at Territory Families or it can be done by the paediatrician or GP.
Um, and so perhaps a, a, a caseworker having a standardised form, which they have to tick boxes in order to say it's not appropriate for a multidisciplinary assessment to happen because none of these problems exist, something like that?
Certainly, it would be um most common for it to be indicated, so it does make sense for it to be more of an opt-out.
Yeah.
Um, that it's not indicated.
Hmm.
Thank you, and um uh that's all the questions I had, Chair, um so I'll stick down.
Yes, thank you very much. Um, I'll just ask the Commissioners, my colleagues, if they have any questions, perhaps starting this time with Commissioner Mason.
Uh, no, thank you, Chair.
Commissioner Galv.
And look, I'd like to ask a little more about school. I was struck by the um reduced attendance um notion and wondered whether Congress works with schools and whether um the training in the assessment tool, um the incorporation of primary health advice into education. Um, what you've, what you think about that and um whether there's been anything done about that? It's a lot, you know, it's like pushing primary health into every corner of life, but that's sort of um s- sounds like it would be really valuable.
It's quite common for us to see children with disability who are on reduced hours. Um, like we talked about with parents, the need for increased supervision and increased one-on-one time for children with a disability is quite high. Um, so we're often talking about schools who are doing their best with the resources that they have. But if they're only funded for that child to receive a one-to-one um in classroom support for so many hours of the day, it is quite, sometimes quite difficult for them to make sure that they keep both that child and the other children engaged in learning focused and safe as well. So we are sometimes seeing children with disability who are sent home from school at, say, twelve o'clock um because the school doesn't feel like they can sustain the child's attention in a way that is safe and meaningful for that child um and the other children beyond that time of day.
And they are quite extreme behaviours that we are sometimes seeing in kids. So it can be quite traumatising for other kids to witness as well. Um, I'm talking like upending classrooms, throwing chairs, so the, the other kids need to be removed from the class in order to keep them safe. Um, it's again, it might be that mismatch of environment and certainly here in Alice Springs, which I haven't seen um done elsewhere in my previous work um here, is that they have satellite classes, which are um in, it's, the child is um verified through the um Acacia Hill Special School here. Um, but the classes happen in um the mainstream school, but in a specialised way. So the class numbers are reduced to, say, six to eight children. Um, there's a teacher and a teacher aide. The curriculum is targeted in a way that the, the children understand and they're able to access it, which is a lot harder to do, say, in a mainstream classroom of twenty-five kids where four kids have neurodevelopmental disability and you've got one teacher aide who's expected to um help support all of those children. Um, you can imagine for a child with a neurodevelopmental disability and if you add a trauma history on top of that, it can be extremely challenging for them to remain in that environment for a whole host of reasons. Um, and so then you see the behaviours as a result of that. Um, the idea with the reduced attendance plan for the schools that we work with is to in- increase that over time. Um, but I think it's a, it reflects that there's, you know, these satellite classes are at capacity. Um, Acacia Hill School is at capacity, so they don't have any more placements. And we're seeing kids every cycle that we're recommending um verification through special education in order for these kids to access the appropriate education service. Um, but when they're at capacity, I, I guess it's similar to other services in town. Um, there's not a lot they can do, so schools just have to work with the resources that they have.
Hmm, but NDIS plans have the potential to fund classroom supports and that's largely untapped. It's happening a little bit?
Certainly being told that they can't.
Yeah.
Um, so we're being told that um it would be double dipping for um for um government to be funding education in two different ways, that education is funded through education and disability through NDIS and that they shouldn't cross over, is what we're being told.
Yeah, that's a big problem for the Northern Territory because the Northern Territory Education Department has very limited resources and capacity to deal with high needs, special needs children. And it was thought the NDIS would be a, a pathway to help with this.
The way we're trying to think about this creatively, and again, it kind of fits with that reduced attendance plan, is that if a young person accesses a youth support worker under their NDIS package for capacity building, community access, um that a child has a reduced day at school and then that youth support worker can come um to take them from school um and do um recreational activities or do that one-to-one support, say, at the library or at home and support them with some of that schoolwork.
Yeah.
Um, so we're trying to think creatively about how kids can get that more one-to-one support. Um, because, yeah, I mean, schools are, are very limited in terms of their resources. And when you hear about them being able to access funding support, it's very rarely one-to-one and it's usually one-to-one in the context of a teacher aide that can offer, you know, half an hour here, um maybe an hour there, or they'll run a small group of four to five kids. Um, but for some of these kids who we're seeing, they might be in year six, year seven, but learning at a year, transition year one, year two levels. So you can imagine the education adjustments that are required for a child to sit in a mainstream classroom, sit and listen to curriculum that's not at their developmental level. Um, and then have the adjust, the adjusted curriculum provided to them after all of the other kids um receive their classroom tasks. So it's a, a lot of working around and it's usually more than one child um that has a neurodevelopmental disability in that mainstream class.
Um, on that note, um so children.
I think we, I thi- I think we might, if you don't mind, just bring it to a halt here, we're, we're a little bit over, over time. I think it's a fairly comprehensive answer to Commissioner Galv's question.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, just one question from me. In response to questions from Mr Power, you indicated that as far as Aboriginal children in out of home care uh are concerned, then the appropriate time for a multidisciplinary assessment is when there are clinical indicators that such an assessment should take place. Did I understand that correctly?
That's right.
That would be the, that would be the same for First Na- for Aboriginal children out of, not in out of home care, wouldn't it?
Absolutely, yep.
But any child, any child.
Any child in Australia, yeah, any child living in Australia.
I follow. Thank you very much. And I'll just uh ask, I think, Ms Chalmers, whether you have any questions to ask about panel?
Thank you, Chair. For the reasons stated in correspondence, no.
Thank you.
Thank you.
In that case, uh Ms Archie, Dr Boffa, Ms Patterson and Ms Blaine, thank you very much for participating in the panel and sharing your views uh with us. Uh, we appreciate your assistance to the Commission and the work that you do in Ellis Springs. Thank you very much for your contribution.
Thank you for having us.
Now, uh, uh, Mr Power, what is the position now or uh?
If we could break for lunch until one forty-five, uh we will return with uh Ms Martina O'Brien, who is a representative from the Department of Territory Families in the Northern Territory.
All right, it's now five past one um Australian Eastern Standard Time. Let's resume at one fifty, that gives everybody forty-five minutes uh to have lunch. Uh, when we resume, uh it would be helpful to have an indication from uh Mr Crowley and/or Ms Drago as to where we are with whatever arrangements have been made concerning findings or lack thereof. You remember that I asked Mr Crowley on Friday what uh we, as Commissioners, are going to be asked to do when we're not being asked to make findings about evidence that's been given by witnesses as to the experiences of children in out of home care. It would be helpful to know just what arrangements have been made between council assisting and parties who've been given leave to appear. And that may have a bearing on uh what approaches to be taken to Ms O'Brien, from whom we shall hear at one fifty or shortly thereafter. So we'll adjourn now until one fifty.
The Royal Commission is adjourned. Royal Commission is resumed.
Yes, Mr Crowley.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Um, Chair, this afternoon, there are two witnesses that we'll hear from. Uh, the first will be uh Ms O'Brien from the Department of Territory Families. Mr Power will deal with that evidence. And we'll then hear further from uh Mr Power taking the evidence of Dr Webster. The Chair, the issue that uh you raised earlier today and also on Friday, I've had some discussions with some of the parties at present, but not with all. But I wanted to um perhaps provide what assistance I can at this stage by just providing a further statement, which may assist yourself and the other Commissioners as well as the parties as to the approach to be taken with respect to the witnesses that we've heard from to date.
Yes, thank you.
That's the witnesses, IL, Audrey, Brandon, Miriam and Grace. That uh evidence, as I indicated in the opening, Chair, that evidence has been presented to the Commission in this public hearing to enable Commissioners to hear directly from First Nations people with disability in out of home care and from their family and carers. So as to allow Commissioners to understand the issues from the perspectives and experiences of those people. Uh, the public hearing provides an opportunity for First Nations people with disability to participate in the Disability Royal Commission and for First Nations voices to be heard so that Commissioners may be informed about matters that are the subject of this inquiry by listening to First Nations people. Although the Commission will not be asked to make particular factual findings uh in respect of the evidence of these witnesses, the evidence is nevertheless relied upon to inform the Commission, to illustrate and to assist the Commissioners with respect to their understanding of broader issues that are the subject of the Commission's inquiry according to its terms of reference, including providing particular, uh providing examples of lived experiences which support systemic issues expected to be addressed by other witnesses in Public Hearing sixteen. In this way, it's expected that the evidence these witnesses will be relied upon by council assisting in respect of submissions to be made in due course concerning findings about systemic issues faced by First Nations children with disability in out of home care and national recommendations. Now, Chair.
All right, thank you.
There may be further matters to add to that, once I've had further discussions with other parties. And it may be the other parties may wish to address you on the issue now at this stage.
If any party wishes to do so, they certainly can have that opportunity. Is there anybody that wants to take advantage of the invitation?
If I might um say, Chair, I uh haven't had the opportunity of receiving a call from City Council Assisting. So this is the first I had heard of it, uh so I'm not in a position to make any submissions now, but would like to reserve my right to do so uh after, I think, the Minister spoke with me, after that has occurred and after I've received instructions on what he's just said.
Yes, thank you very much. Does anybody else wish to say something, any other representative, that is? Now, if not, we can proceed, but I should say, Mr Crowley, that the point of my question was in part that it's not very clear to me at the moment what the Commissioners can do with evidence of specific, um, what are said to be specific examples of experiences, if those are disputed and we're not invited to make any findings. But that's something that uh no doubt can be postponed until a later stage. But that's the issue that is troubling me just a little.
Yes, I see. Thank you, Chair.
All right, yes, let's proceed.
I'll hand over to Mr Power.
Mr Power, you're back again.
Yes. Um, uh, Chair, the next witness we'll be hearing from is Martina O'Brien. Um, now, up on screen is a, a screen noting Cecilia Gore, but I, I would assume that that will be Martina O'Brien. Uh, so there's obviously no one in the picture at the moment, but uh while that's occurring, um.
I did see a sh- I did see a shadow, but briefly, across the screen. Whether there is some substance behind the shadow, I'm not sure.
Yes, um, it has the distinctive uh background of the NT's hearing rooms. Um, so I think it must be Ms O'Brien, but we'll try and determine that. Um, I'll just do the administrative matters first.
Yeah.
Uh, Martina O'Brien is a witness from the Northern Territory Department of uh Territory Families Housing and Communities um who will give evidence in respect of her review of the case file for Miriam. Um, Commissioners, you'll find a copy of Ms O'Brien's statement at tender bundle part A, tab one five five. Um, there are five annexes to Ms O'Brien's statement at part A of the tender bundle at tabs four eight one to four eight five. And so it asks that her statement be tendered as exhibit sixteen point ten and the annexes to her statement uh tended as exhibit sixteen point ten point one to sixteen point ten point five.
Yes, that can be done, thank you.
Thank you.
I think, I think we have Ms O'Brien on screen.
Indeed, I, I ask that she be sworn or affirmed.
Yes. Uh, Ms O'Brien, thank you very much for coming. Uh, Ms. O'Brien, thank you very much for coming to the Commission to give evidence. Um, I understand that you wish to be, take the oath. So if you would be good enough to follow the instructions of my associate, who is remote from you, he will administer the oath, thank you.
I will read you the oath. At the end, please say yes or I do. Do you swear by Almighty God that the evidence that you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, Ms. O'Brien. Uh, just to explain where everybody is. Commissioner Galbally, whom you can see on screen, is joining us from Melbourne. Commissioner Mason is in our Brisbane hearing room. I am in the hearing room in Sydney of the Royal Commission. And Mr. Power, who will ask you some questions, is also in the Brisbane hearing room. Thank you. Mr. Power will now ask you some questions.
Ms. O'Brien, could you tell the Commission your full name and your occupation?
Martina O'Brien. I'm employed as the Director for Central Australia Urban Team, Territory Families, Housing and Communities.
And is the department frequently colloquially known as Territory Families?
Yes.
Right, um, so I'll refer to the department as Territory Families, but noting its full title. Now, prior to your present role, you worked as a social worker in Ireland, a child protection officer in Victoria and as a team leader and manager for Territory Families at Tenet Creek.
Yes.
Right. And in some of those roles, you were a line worker yourself in dealing with children in need of protection?
That's correct.
Right, now, uh, you yourself have had no contact with Miriam, uh, who's the case study for this matter, uh, but have reviewed the territory file for Miriam, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. Now, um, in that review, uh, you've produced a statement um, with a particular focus on three questions that had been raised by the Royal Commission. And what I've proposed to do is to commence with a broad overview of the information set out in your statement for the benefit of those listening who haven't had the opportunity to read it. Now, um, I'll just ask you after each proposition to confirm if this is correct. Miriam was under a protection order for approximately nine and a half years from when she was four years old in 2010, until she was aged 13 in November 2019?
Yes, that's correct.
And the protection order was revoked on the application of the Chief Executive in 2019, when Miriam was 13. Um, and that was so that she would go into the care, uh, uh, out of the care of the department and, um, and was with relatives. And that was on the basis that she'd been in kinship care with those same relatives for approximately one year, uh, November 2018 to November 2019?
That's correct, they were able to, assessed as able to meet her needs.
And whilst under the care of Territory Families, Miriam was in a quote group home care, um, situation for approximately 22 months of the nine and a half years, um, made up of four months in 2013, when she was seven, 17 months in 2016, 2017, when she was aged 10 and 11, and one month in 2018, when she was aged 12?
That's correct.
Right. Now, in terms of the three issues that Territory Families was asked to respond to, um, oh, this is a paraphrase, but, um, one, whether Miriam was assessed for fetal alcohol syndrome disorder, FASD, and if not, why that had not been done? Two, whether Miriam was given appropriate counselling for childhood sexual abuse? And three, why Miriam was placed in a group home situation when she was seven years of age? Um, now, your statement on behalf of Territory Families um, covers 11 pages and annexes, uh, five documents and also footnotes a number of Territory Families file documents. Um, but in order to put, uh, the questions into perspective, I just want to commence with a brief summary of the response to those three issues. Uh, and I'll just ask, and, and to confirm through your counsel if these summaries have been, um, given to you so that you have, you're not hearing from the first time right now. Is that right?
That's right.
All right, now, um, issue one, with regard to FASD, um, you indicate in your statement that the state of knowledge about FASD and the relevant policies of Territory Families on FASD assessments have changed since 2018. And Territory Families acknowledged that were Miriam a child taken to, into care at the time of the new policies post 2018, that her behaviours and risk factors, which you list at paragraph 22 of your statement, would now have led to a FASD assessment. At paragraph 23, you note that Territory Families have said that it would still be possible for them to assist Miriam to be assessed for FASD or any other disorders um, through a multidisciplinary assessment conducted through Congress Health Service. And that is as a result of, um, post-care assistance that can be given by Territory Families. Uh, is that brief summary, uh, correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And two, with regard to the appropriate counselling for sexual abuse, your statement addresses the records held by Territory Families in relation to what assessments and counselling was done. Your statement notes that the last departmental record of any counselling for sexual abuse dates from the 20th of December 2016, when Miriam was 11 years old, uh, sorry, 10 years old, not far off turning 11. And that the last record recommended a specialist risk assessment, but that it's not clear from Territory Families' records if that assessment ever occurred. Is that correct as a brief summary?
Yes, that's correct.
Right. With regard to the third issue, uh, that is Miriam being placed in a group home for four months at age seven, your statement, um, details the reasons why this occurred with reference to documents. The main immediate reason offered is that there was a late withdrawal of a potential kinship carer. Um, further, it's noted that, um, the particular group home had a dual role, uh, in assisting with kinship care placements. Um, is also, um, noted that, sorry, there is also an explanation given about the lack of available carers and the higher number of children in out of home care in Ellis Springs at the time that this occurred, compared with, uh, the number there are now. Your statement does note that the ages of certain of the other children in group home at the time when Miriam, uh, was present there um, was not in accordance with the contractual restrictions on older children being cared for in the same group home. Um, in relation to issue three, is that as a brief summary correct?
Yes, it is.
All right. Now, um, i- is it correct that, um, to assist with this examination, you, uh, your counsel has been provided with a, a list of uh, 13 documents taken from Territory Families' larger file and that you have those documents available to you?
Yes, I do.
And, um, for the purpose of ease of reference via AVL, um, each one of them has been listed as 1 to 13. Um, so I'll refer to them by that number, but I'll also give the, the, the full title and the document ID number. Um, uh, but just to confirm, you have those documents with you?
Yes, I do.
All right, thank you. Now, um, I'm not going to place any of the documents up on screen uh, to ensure that, um, Miriam's identity isn't inadvertently disclosed. So I want to first go to issue number two, that is the prior, uh, sexual abuse and the, um, counselling was provided, uh, for that. Now, to document one, um, is a document from 3 January 2013, when Miriam was six, turning seven. And it is, uh, tender bundle A, tab 67, document, um, 16.716, um, NTT 0002 0008 0694. Now, uh, just to confirm, this is a Territory Families' progress note which records that Miriam's carer at the time, who was not Grace, but a prior carer, told Territory Families of certain, specific, very concerning sexual behaviour by Miriam that had been seen by an older daughter of the carer and that Miriam had also asked another child who was in out of home care, under the same carer, that they mutually touch each other on the vagina. The document also states that Miriam told her carer that whilst living in a particular named locality, that a woman who she did not know, quote, would touch her on the bottom and that the other children at that named place would touch each other on the vagina. And the carer indicated that the proposed kinship carer, uh, had a son and so the kinship carer, quote, would need to be aware of the concerns. Um, is that what, uh, uh, part of what document one, that progress note from 3 January states?
Yes.
All right. Moving to document two, um, this is, uh, uh, a document from 4 January 2013, tender bundle A, tab 68, document 16.7.17, NTT 0002 0008 2583. And is it correct that this is a Territory Families intake document, uh, responding essentially to the progress note that I've just, uh, read from? And it states, um, on the second page, um, that the concerns have also been sent to police for further follow-up slash discussion?
Yes, that's correct.
Then, um, if I can move to document four, I'll come back to document three. Um, is it correct that document four, which is tender bundle A, tab 72, document 16.7.20, NTT 0002 0008 0864, is an affidavit filed in the local court at Darwin from the prior carer? Uh, and that, um, affidavit, uh, contains, um, a number of paragraphs, and if I could take you to paragraph 10 of that affidavit? Um, now, paragraph 10, um, uh, states that, uh, in January 2013, the carer spoke with Miriam in private after having certain disclosures made to her.
Mr. Power.
Sorry, sorry.
Um, I'm just concerned with the state where we are with the evidence being given and we may not have done a content warning at the beginning.
Yes, sorry, yes.
Um, if that could be, if that could be done.
Yes, I'll, I'll perhaps do that now, um, uh, and we could.
I can read that actually.
Thank you, thank you very much, Chair. I'm sorry, Commissioner Mason.
Thank you. Uh, this is a First Nations content warning. Uh, this hearing will include evidence that may bring about different responses for people. It will include accounts of violence, abuse, neglect and exploitation of First Nations people with disability. Will also include references to First Nations people who are deceased. If the evidence raises concerns for you, please contact the National Counselling and Referral Service on 1800 421 468. You can also contact Lifeline on 13 11 14, Beyond Blue on 1300 224 636, or for First Nations viewers, your local Aboriginal medical services for social and emotional wellbeing support. Thank you, Mr. Power.
Thank you. Now, um, what's set out in that filed court affidavit, uh, in paragraph 10, um, is that the prior carer asked, um, Miriam whether she had been touched in a private place and that she explained to me that, yes, she had. Miriam said it had happened when she was younger, living at a specified place and that a lady she did not know the name of or was not willing to tell me had touched her bottom and fingered her. And she gave me the impression this had happened more than once. She became very teary at this stage and started to curl up on the front passenger seat. She also told me that the kids at the named place also touched each other quite regularly, sorry, touched each other regularly in the vagina and bottom. And when I asked her if she'd ever touched anyone in the private parts, she admitted touching Caleb, her younger brother, who she lived with in Grace's care, on the penis and only when Grace was not looking. She said that nobody knew she was doing it. I, that is the previous carer, I rang Grace and also to let her know that this had occurred and to keep an eye on Caleb for any impact, even though he is still very young. All of this was explained to named care, uh, Territory's family caseworker at the time. Now, if I can, i- is that correct that that's what's contained in that paragraph of the affidavit?
Yes.
Okay, and now taking you back to, um, document three, and that is a Northern Territory Police report dated 19 May 2013, titled Completion of Investigation, which is tender bundle A, tab 76, document 16.7.25, NTT 0002 0008 2624. Now, if you look at, um, that document, um, the circumstances that the police, uh, are investigating are set out in that document. Um, the, and you can see that, that it's set out there, uh, circumstances are that an OCF intake has been received, stating that the subject child is currently in care. Her previous caseworker, uh, told her previous caseworker that her other OCF child had seen the subject child doing a specified thing and also requested that this child touch her front. Now, um, it, 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 it's clear from this police report, um, which ends with no further police action, uh, required. Um, and that includes the subject child was spoken to and she made no disclosures, nor said anything of concern. Um, it's clear, isn't it, that this police officer, uh, was not aware of either the sexual abuse of Miriam when she was a child at a specified place or of the disclosure that Miriam had touched her younger brother Caleb sexually? That, that's apparent from that document, isn't it?
But the police investigation would have been on foot of the intake document?
Well.
That's the document that goes to police when they, um, initiate a court investigation?
All right, well, this document is titled Report to NT Families and Children: Completion of Investigation. Now, when the caseworker received this document, um, whether or not the police had been correctly informed of what had occurred, um, this document would indicate on its face that the police had not looked at the issue of childhood sexual abuse of Miriam herself, doesn't it?
The paragraph where the subject child was spoken to and she made no, no disclosures, nor said anything of concern, I interpret that, that that's relating to any possible harm that she experienced herself?
Yes, but, uh, you can see that the circumstances that it's, that it's, this police officer understands it's been referred to is limited to the observed sexual behaviour and the request of other children to touch her front. Now, of course, by this time, Territory Families was aware that, uh, serious allegations of sexual abuse of Miriam as a child had occurred and yet, um, that's not noted here at all.
So the first paragraph references the intake?
Yes.
Which is the content of the intake does, does discuss her, um, disclosures in relation to prior sexual assault?
Yes, but this document where the police. Yes, but this document where the police officer is, is looking at it, this is a seven-year-old child. They can't be prosecuted under N T law anyway, they're too young. So they, it's, the circumstances of this document don't reflect the allegation of sexual abuse at all. It's the most important thing they'd be looking at, and yet it's not mentioned. Do you agree it's not mentioned?
It's not specifically mentioned.
Well, it's not mentioned at all.
Yeah.
All right. Um, now, uh, the, because, uh, there was no investigation, it was not established when this sexual offending against Miriam by an adult occurred. But do you agree that Miriam was living at the place that's named, not in the police material, but in the other material, from when she came into Territory Families' care on the tenth of May, sorry, on May twenty ten, when she was four, until she moved into Grace's care for the first time at age five? So, that, that's correct, isn't it?
I believe it's the same location, yes.
Yes. And so it's certainly possible that the disclosed sexual abuse occurred to Miriam while she was on a sec, on a protection order with Territory Families.
It's possible, but my understanding is she identified it occurred when she was two or three years of age?
Well, it, the, um, the, uh, because there was no investigation, um, the timing of it is unknown, and Territory Families certainly never returned this issue to Territory Police. Um, separate from, uh, from Miriam to say, look, there's this allegation of sexual abuse by an adult, as well as, um, sexual behaviours by children of unknown ages in this named location. Territory Families never referred that to the police, did they? Or, or don't you know?
What was referred to police, what is what's in the intake documents?
Right, but when it came back to Territory Families, it's clear from that completion report that they didn't, that, that particular officer didn't understand that to be the case. All right, well, I'll move on, um.
I think, uh, is the point you're making, Mister Power, not so much about what the particular officer did or did not think. Uh, I doubt that Miss O'Brien can help us with that, since she's had no involvement with the officer or with the officer's investigation. The point you're making, if I follow it, is that Territory Families, once they got the completion invest, of investigation document, being the document behind tab three, should have realised that there was a serious allegation of sex, a sexual act or acts committed on Miriam that had not, for whatever reason, been investigated. Is that the point you're making?
That's the point I'm making, your, uh, Chair.
Yeah. Well, um, what is it that you want to put to Miss O'Brien that she can help with? Is there any issue that Territory Families did not carry the matter further? Is that in dispute?
Uh, well, uh, uh, um, Miss O'Brien, in relation to these twenty thirteen allegations, from your review of the records, Territory Families did not carry it further in regards to any, uh, response to the police, did they?
In relation to police, I don't, I haven't found anything in the notes about any further contact. We did make a referral for a psychological assessment, um, to look up the disclosure of sexual abuse.
And I'm going to come to that, I'm going to come to that, but I wanted to just do it in, in order, uh, of the disclosures, so. As I said, I'll come to the, what was done in terms of treatment, but I first want to go to the next disclosure by Miriam of sexual abuse committed against her. Now, the records reflect that in December twenty fourteen, Miriam was placed in the care of Grace. Uh, do you agree with that?
Yes.
Now, in terms of what the Territory Family records show for Miriam, uh, the Territory Families' records show nothing about Grace being told by Territory Families about Miriam's sec, disclosure of sexual abuse by her, by her of Caleb, or of sexual abuse of herself as a child. With regard to records for Miriam, there is no record that, that she was ever told anything on that. Is that correct?
In relation to Miriam's file, I didn't find that information. However, when I looked at her sibling's file, I was able to see that that conversation had occurred.
All right. Now, the, the sibling we're referring to is the sibling, uh, referred to by the pseudonym Caleb.
Caleb.
Um, and, uh, i- is it correct that your, 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 Department of Territory Families will provide some information about that, but it's not information that's presently with the Royal Commission?
I don't think it is.
No, all right. Now, so moving on, moving on to twenty sixteen, um, I want to refer to two documents, and they're, uh, Documents Five and Six. Uh, Document Five being, um, uh, a Child Protection Investigation Summary Report, tender bundle A, tab one one nine, document sixteen point seven point six eight, N T T triple zero two, triple zero eight, fourteen seventy eight, and a S A R K referral form dated, uh, it's hard to find the precise date, it seems thirteen January twenty sixteen, which is tender bundle A, tab one one four, document sixteen point seven sixty three, N T T triple zero two, triple zero eight, thirteen forty nine. Now, is it correct that these two documents record that Grace received disclosures from Caleb that led her to speak, that is, led Grace to speak to Miriam, and Miriam made disclosures to Grace? With the effect of those disclosures being that Miriam said that she'd been acting towards Caleb in a sexual way, including touching his penis and penetrative acts, and that she also made a disclosure of sexual abuse against herself. And on this occasion, it was disclosure of sexual abuse against her as a child about an adult male having sexually abused her in the family home at the locality, at a locality that stated, and involved fondling her breasts and penetration of her anus. And that, um, page one of the S A R, S A R C referral form states, quote, Miriam met with the C A T team, but was unable to be interviewed due to the level of distress displayed by the child Miriam, uh, displayed by the child. Miriam indicated she would like someone to speak with and agreed to a S A R K referral. Now, is that a correct summary of the contents of those two documents?
That's correct.
All right. Now, i- if I can go to the, the next, uh, document, Document Seven, which is.
What, what, what's an S A R C referral?
Yes, uh, so, um, i- is it correct that, uh, S A R C is Sexual Assault Referral Centre, uh, which is a centre with the Northern Territory Department of Health?
Yes, that's correct.
All right.
Uh, this, sorry, I, I, I want to understand this. It, this records that Miriam met with a team, was unable to be interviewed because of her distress. But she agreed to a referral. How does a ten-year-old child agree to a referral to a sexual, um, abuse team? What, what does that mean?
Um, Miss O'Brien, are you able to assist with what that means?
According to the document, she agreed that she would speak with the councillor.
All right. Um, so moving to Document, uh, Seven, uh, it is, um, the same type of document as, uh, in twenty thirteen. That is, a Report to N T Families and Children: Completion of Investigation document, um, from the N T Police. Uh, but it is dated, it is dated nine June twenty sixteen. It's tender bundle A, tab one twenty seven, document sixteen point seven point seventy six, N T T triple zero two, triple zero eight, two four eight two. Now, this, um, indicates that Miriam was again taken to a police officer. This time, the document does refer to disclosures about, uh, sexual abuse of her as a younger child. And it states, C A T S and D C F spoke with Miriam, and she became very upset and did not wish to talk further. She was referred to counselling with S A R C at this stage. The matter will be finalised and C A T S will be notified if and when Miriam is ready to disclose her matter. Nil further police action required, D C F notified of outcome. Now, is that, uh, correct, that that's what the document states?
Yes, that's correct.
And, uh, C A T S, uh, what, what is that?
So that's the Child Abuse Task Force?
Right. And that's a, a, is that a police task force, or is that a, uh, Territory Families' task force?
So it's made up of, um, police who have forensic interview training, um, child protection staff.
All right. Um, and D C F is, uh, the department which we're referring to as Territory Families?
Yes.
All right. Now, um, at this point in time, um, Miriam had made two disclosures to her carers about serious sexual abuse of her as a child. Do you agree with that?
Yes.
And the effect of this, these disclosures was that two different adults had sexually abused again her at a named locality, and in the most recent disclosure, the abuse was identified as having occurred in her home. Do you agree with that?
Yes.
All right. Now, um, again, because there was no further investigation, um, it, it, Territory Families can't be sure whether or not this sexual abuse occurred when Miriam was four or five, when she was still living at the named locality and was under a protection order from Territory Families, can it?
So there was reference to the timeframe, I believe, in the psychological assessment?
Right. Well, we'll come to that in a moment, but the, um, now, um, do you agree that, um, quite apart from anything else, uh, there was a risk that these adults might sexually offend against other children? Do, do you agree, it's, it's possible, yes? Um, uh, and, um, would you agree, well, sorry, I'll, I'll come to the, 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 come now to the, um, psychological, um, treatment, and, um, it's, uh, but before I, I do that, I'll just take you to, um, I know, sorry, I'll go to the, um, no, so I'll take you to tab thirteen of the document bundle and, um, this is, um, it's actually two Territory Families' General Case Closure Summary Documents from the fifteenth of August twenty sixteen and, and October twenty sixteen. Um, and it's, uh, document thirteen in the bundle, tender bundle A, tab one three seven, document sixteen point seven point eight six, N T T triple zero two, triple zero eight, thirteen sixty nine. Now, if I can take you to page, uh, four, um, the, uh, the document refers to a visit by certain named case officers to Miriam uh, on the fifth of September twenty sixteen. And, um, part of that was, um, she was asked about a contact visit with her brother Caleb that she had missed. And near the top of page four, in the second paragraph, the caseworker asked why it was that she missed that last access visit, and Miriam is recorded as having replied by saying, quote, that she was ashamed and tired. Now, that's in fifth of September twenty sixteen. Um, do you agree that that's, that file note ref- reflects that?
Yes.
Okay. Now, at this point in time, in September twenty sixteen, Miriam was ten years old. If a child was talking about her feeling ashamed about having contact with her younger brother, who was her closest sibling, and that was why she was not seeing her brother, that's a matter of great concern for Territory Families, wouldn't it be?
Yes.
All right. Now, let's go to the documents about counselling and therapy. And if I can take you first to, uh, Document Eight in the, the bundle of documents, and that is a report of Mister Thomas Sibold, S I double B A L D, a clinical psychologist, which is dated the twenty-third of July twenty thirteen, and filed with the Magistrates Court at Darwin on the fifteenth of August twenty thirteen, which is tender bundle A, tab eighty-six, document sixteen point seven point three five, N T T triple zero two, triple zero eight, zero seven six one. Now, your statement at, uh, paragraph twenty A says that this report was requested by Territory Families in or about, uh, May of twenty thirteen. Now, if you go to the pa, first page of the report itself, um, you can see, uh, that there is a statement as to what the concerns are, which form the basis for the evaluation. And then there's a section in quotations. Um, do you see that part of the report on page one of the report?
Yes, the limitations of the current assessment, yep.
Yep. Uh, and, uh, no, uh, above that, so, uh, Miriam's O C F case manager in Ellis Springs, named caseworker, provided the following concerns which form the basis for this evaluation. See the quote, and then the section, the quotations.
Yes.
Okay. Um, now, you agree that that description does not include the carer's description of Miriam's sexualised behaviour towards Caleb, which was set out in the carer's affidavit, paragraph ten of their affidavit on the twenty-seventh of April twenty thirteen, in the same court proceedings this was filed. Do you agree it doesn't refer at all to that?
That paragraph doesn't include that, yes.
And nowhere else in the report does, either. Well, you.
The psychologists did have direct contact with, um, that carer?
They, they did, yes, but there's, there's nothing in the face of this report which shows that they were informed about the sexual abuse, the sexual contact towards Caleb, was there?
That paragraph doesn't include that.
No. Now, um, if you then go, uh, to, uh, page five of, of the report, um, uh, it's, and it's under the heading, uh, opinion, um, it, it, one of the paragraphs read, given the lack of a pattern of sexually inappropriate, uh, given the lack of pattern of sexually inappropriate e- explorative or sexualised behaviours, there is no reason to conclude that Miriam's isolated, inappropriate sexualised behaviours represent a specific risk factor. However, in the event, in the, however, the events in the period ahead will either provide her with protective or further risk factors associated with sexualised behaviours. Now, unbeknownst to Mister Sibold, this wasn't isolated. There was another set of sexualised behaviours, which was touching the penis of Caleb, her younger brother, but, quote, only when Grace was not looking. Now, Now, Territory Families was aware of this, but, um, Mister Sibold wasn't. Because one can see from that paragraph, but also the basis on which he was asked to form the basis of the evaluation. Um, shows that he was unaware that it wasn't just the one observed sexual behaviour. And asked, making a request of another child, which is what he set out on page one, in fact, there was another set. Of sexualised behaviours being hidden from adults. Do you agree with that?
I agree that it's not mentioned in that initial paragraph, but he did have a separate meeting with the original notifier.
Okay, so you're saying that, you're saying that.
Let, let, please, uh, Miss O'Brien complete her answer, please complete your answer.
Yes, so that, that paragraph on the first page doesn't include the reference to her sibling. However, the person that notified us of those concerns had an individual meeting with the psychologist. As part of his assessment, excuse me.
Uh, and, uh, you have, um, no way of knowing. Whether or not that carer thought there was an obligation. From her to provide this person with a history of the abuse. You've got no way of knowing whether she thought that she had an obligation to do it, or whether she thought that the department would have briefed the psychologist.
Yeah, I can't answer that.
No, uh, but what you would agree is that on the face of the report. It does not appear that Mister Sibold has, well, he certainly has not listed anywhere. This significant, uh, factual basis, and in fact, what's in, under his opinion. Would seem to suggest he was not aware of it.
There was, um, confirmation with the previous carer Grace. To establish whether there'd been a pattern of that behaviour in that placement. I'm not sure if that, if that's what he's referring to.
Well, he, uh. He never spoke to Grace. Um, if you look at page two, um, it is meeting with the prior named carer. Um, and, uh, the, the entirety of the, quote, direct stakeholder interviews. Were conducted on the eighteenth of July, um, and, uh, uh, in- include what's listed there. Speaking with the grandmother, speaking with the prior carer, um, and, uh. The, and Miriam, uh, and the carer's other child. As well as various emails and telephone conversations, uh, with a named caseworker. Um, so. There's no, he, he didn't speak to Grace.
No, but he spoke with the case manager who spoke with Grace.
Right, okay, all right, um, so, um. The Territory Families records show that Miriam was referred to a, a centre called Holly Oak. Um, H O L Y O A K E, for what was described as sandplay therapy.
Yes, she was.
And you've had a chance to review the documents, um, from Holly Oak and any referrals to them?
Yes, she, she attended for, um, weekly sessions.
Yes.
Into different hearings.
Yep, and nowhere in those records do, do they say that she's being referred to, referred there. For sa- childhood sexual abuse, and nor does any exit interview from Holly Oak refer to it, it just refers to trauma, doesn't it?
Um, can you refer me to the documents?
Uh, well, I, I suggest that they don't, but you, if you're welcome to take the question on notice, and if any of the Holly Oak documents refer to. Um, uh, refer to, uh. What therapy was done for sexual abuse, um, you, you could let the commission know. Would you like to take the question on notice? Would you like to take that question?
Yes, I'll take that question.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, um, now, um. We then move, uh, to, uh, tab nine, um, which is a report. Um, from a psychiatrist, Doctor Sally Cleworth, C L E W O R T H. Of nineteen December twenty fourteen, um, which is tender bundle A, tab one oh five. Document sixteen point seven point fifty four, N T T point, uh, triple zero two, triple zero eight. Eleven ninety two. Now, that document, um, gives a brief life history. A description of challenging behaviours, but the report makes no reference at all. To any disclosures of childhood sexual abuse, sexualised behaviours. And also there's no reference at all to any therapy with Holly Oak. Do you agree with that?
Yes, there's no reference to Holly Oak.
Hey.
Or just sexualised behaviours.
Yes, um. That strongly suggests, doesn't it, given the context of the report, that, uh, Doctor Cleworth was not informed of those matters. By Territory Families.
It doesn't mention it at all, so yes, it's possible that she had no prior knowledge of that.
All right, now, if we move to, uh, document ten. Um, that is a further report from the same psychiatrist, Doctor Cleworth. Tender bundle A, tab one twenty eight, document sixteen point seven point seven seven. N T T triple zero two, triple zero eight, point two one eight four. Now, if we go to page, um, three of that report, um. Uh, there's a, a, a paragraph which is bolded with the, the bolded words, in summary. Which reads, in summary, Miriam's history suggests a very prolonged pattern of sexualised abu- behaviour. Probably resulting from being a victim herself of intense recurrent sexual abuse from a very young age. Her repeated sexualised behaviour pattern towards Caleb. And sexual comments to an older foster child years ago suggests she may well struggle to control this kind of behaviour in the future. That children around her, younger and older, of both genders, could be at high risk. And that seeing Caleb could be a trigger for future sexualised behaviour. Miriam's ability to effectively conceal her behaviour from adults, a notable feature. And all adults responsible for the safety and care of Miriam and other children around her. Need to be acutely aware of this issue at all times. Now, given what's said there and elsewhere in Doctor Cleworth's report, um. You would agree that, um, in light of that report, Territory Families. Would want Miriam to engage in therapy. And for Territory Families to have some sort of final report showing that the therapy had been successful. And no further therapy was required. Would you agree with that?
Yes.
Okay, now this report by Doctor Cleworth was ten June twenty sixteen, so when. Um, Miriam was ten years of age. Now, at paragraph, um, twenty eight. Um, uh, I, twenty eight of your statement, and perhaps if we could ask that that. Be placed up on the screen, I understand we have a redacted version of that, that, that statement, um. And that'll come up in a moment, but you, you, you've got your statement there and you've got paragraph twenty eight. Um, yeah, it may take a moment to come up on screen, but, um. What it, what we have, um, uh, is obviously the, uh, disclosure, uh, itself. And, and well, perhaps, yep, sorry, I think it's coming up on screen, um, so. There, it notes, obviously, Miriam didn't make any disclosures, um, on or about the twenty seventh of March twenty sixteen. Miriam, uh, was referred to, um, SARC. Now, uh. That, uh, that, uh, um, is a, i- is the first, um, step. That was taken, um, in, in terms of the referral to SARC, um. We then have, um, some six weeks later, a referral meeting to identify, uh, session times. And then it notes that Miriam attended two appointments with SARC, the fifteenth of June. And the first of September, and the rest of the appointments were cancelled by S A R K. Um, now, that, that's based on your review of the, the documents held by, uh, Territory Families?
Yes, that's correct.
All right, then if we can go to paragraph B, um, that's the extent of the referral to SARC. What we have is the, paragraph B, uh, which is on the following page, that. On the, um, seventeenth of August, Miriam was referred to in care support. Now, what is in care support?
It was, um, ther- therapeutic support provided within the department for children out of home care.
And it notes that there was a delay in the acceptance of the referral, and. On the thir- third of October twenty sixteen, Miriam, uh, referral was accepted and she was allocated to a named therapist. Um, so by this point in time, we're at the third of October, and there had been two therapy sessions. You agree with that?
Um, it was very difficult to, to, um, I guess, to find all the information on the notes. There was one, um, case note which said she'd had six or seven sessions, but then. Uh, differing case notes that said she hadn't engaged, so it was really difficult to get the overall picture.
Right, um, and then C, paragraph C, um, we have, um, C C I S. Um, note a phone call from, and then, uh, there's, things are blacked out, but they are. A named person at S A R C to, um, the named therapist from in care support. On, uh, twenty one October twenty sixteen, where S A R, S A R C supported in care support. Taking over Miriam's case for the provision of therapy. Now, um. Do the records show whether there was actually any, uh, therapy between the third of October twenty sixteen and. Uh, this conversation on the twenty first of October twenty sixteen?
Again, it wasn't clear, um, from what I could gather, the in care support met with the case manager. But it wasn't clear if they, if they met with the child.
Okay, and if we just go to the final paragraph, which is D, um, what we do know is that. On the twentieth of December twenty sixteen, um, in care support suggests that recommended Miriam's case be closed. To allow case manager to seek a specialised risk assessment, and from your review, it's not apparent. Wh- whether, from the Territory Families' records, whether a risk assessment occurred. Or the context that led to this recommendation. That's correct?
That's correct.
Okay, now, um, if I can, uh, take you to, um. Document eleven in the bundle, which is a, which is the next out of home care plan for January twenty seventeen. Um, and it is, uh, tender bundle A, tab one four six, document. Sixteen point seven ninety five, N T T, triple zero two, triple zero eight, two two four four. Now, um, if I can take you to, um, page, uh. Uh, four of that, uh, document, and it's set out in columns, but, um. Second full paragraph down, it reads, and this is the report for January twenty seventeen. Miriam continues to, nearly on a daily basis, abscond from placements with other clients who are older. And a concern around this is that Miriam does not demonstrate any protective behaviours. Or demonstrate any awareness of stranger danger. Miriam has previously attended several sessions at the Sexual Assault. Referral Centre SARC in relation to protective behaviours. C M referred Miriam to in care support, I C S, for support in relation to. Protective behaviours and making herself safe, um. Peer pressure, bullying and self-esteem, with the goal to make her feel more confident in expressing her views and wishes. I C S expressed they did not have the capacity to commence services for Miriam. And that she needs more support than the short term support offered by I C S. Now, um, firstly, uh, that certainly on the face of it does not seem to be the sort of. Um, high level counselling and support that someone who had suffered. The degree of sexual abuse described in Doctor Cleworth's statement needed, does it?
Well, the case manager made the appropriate referrals, but it doesn't seem like the service, um, I guess, was delivered. By either, either service.
All right, and, um. This is, of course, a Territory Families document, so, uh. With regard to the care of Miriam for this issue of sexual abuse. Um, you agree that from twenty December twenty sixteen onwards, as far as. Territory Families' records show, she received no further treatment at all for her childhood sexual abuse. Or for her sexualised behaviours?
I didn't see anything in my notes, um, further sexual, uh, counselling.
All right, would you agree that with regard to the issue of. Territory Families dealing with Miriam as a child who has disclosed sexual abuse? Do you agree that Miri- that in this area of Miriam's care, her care and protection was not well achieved?
I think, um, on review of the notes and the documents. That despite the case management team making the appropriate referrals, she didn't receive the appropriate service.
And would you agree that the failures in this aspect of Miriam's care and protection could accurately be described as neglect?
As I say, it was, the case management did make the appropriate referrals. But they didn't get the service that they had, um, that had been accepted and agreed.
Yes, but they knew that, and they still made no further efforts as far as Territory Families' records show it, isn't that right?
As far as the records show, um, it does mention that there was recurring monthly case conferences. Convened, but I don't, I can't identify that further, um. Assessments or counselling was organised.
Yes, and those case conferences appear to be case conferences with the caseworkers, not with Miriam.
It would be with the, um, yeah, the care team, the professional team.
All right, um, similarly to, um, similarly to. What has been offered in relation to Miriam's, um, uh, post-protection order care. Is Territory Families prepared to facilitate, um, psychiatric or psychological treatment? If it is seen as needed for Miriam, um, in relation to this issue of being a survivor of child sexual, childhood sexual abuse? Or do you need to take instructions on that?
Now, under the provisions of aftercare, we can support Miriam in this regard.
Right, thank you, um, Chair, I've reached the time limit, um, uh, uh. Uh, Miss Chalmers, counsel for N T, has provided some notes, uh, in relation to answers to the other, uh, two issues, and I can perhaps. Um, work with Miss Chalmers to provide an addendum with, uh, uh, either addendum information or an addendum statement, just to. Ensure that the F A S D and, uh, the placement issues are, are, are properly addressed from some further. from some further discussions that Ms Chalmers was able to have with Ms O'Brien, which updates that slightly.
Yes, very well.
Those are my questions.
Yes, thank you. Ms O'Brien, we've been jumping about a bit chronologically and I may have missed something. But what we have in the documentation is a report from Dr Cleworth, dated nineteen December, two thousand and fourteen. That's the document behind tab nine. That document does not appear to indicate that Dr. Cleworth, that's, I hope I've pronounced her name correctly, appreciated that there may have been child sexual, sexual abuse perpetrated upon Miriam when she was very young and certainly on more than one occasion. And yet, by the time of the report from Dr Cleworth of the tenth of June, two thousand and sixteen, which appears behind tab ten, and also there's a copy in my version between in tab nine as well. She does appear to appreciate that the likelihood is that Miriam did experience multiple sexual abuse. Is there anything to indicate how Dr Cleworth, between two thousand and fourteen and two thousand and sixteen, came to appreciate that this was likely to be the situation?
My understanding from reviewing the document is that she, she's aware of why the placement broke down.
Broke down when?
Was the context of with Grace, which was related to the disclosures against the younger sibling.
Yes, but when did that, when were those disclosures made?
In March.
Two thousand and sixteen.
Two thousand and sixteen. And her report references that she started seeing Miriam again in April.
You would, you would infer from the documentation that Dr Cleworth, on the basis of what was revealed in March, two thousand and sixteen, came to the conclusion that she expresses in the letter of the tenth of June of two thousand and sixteen, thus has a different appreciation of Miriam's circumstances than in two thousand and fourteen. Is that your assessment of the record?
Yes.
What is it in that, just take me please to what is said on the, in the March document that indicates that? Which tab are we in when you refer to the March document?
So I'm looking at the document that's dated June tenth, two thousand and sixteen.
That's the letter from Dr Cleworth?
Yes.
Yeah.
So in her first paragraph, she gives the context about why she was seeing Miriam again.
Yes. But where does, I'm sorry, where does that indicate that Miriam had been subjected to more sexual abuse than had previously been indicated? That's what I'm trying to understand.
So I believe she's made her opinion based on that, the most recent disclosures from March, two thousand and sixteen.
Yeah, but what, maybe I've overlooked something and the difficulty here, and I think for the other commissioners as well, is that we've only received some of these documents very recently and I'm trying to follow them. What was it that was revealed in March? Which is the document that you're referring to when you reference disclosures that were made in March, two thousand and sixteen?
Chair, if I, I could assist, tab five of the, the smaller bundle, which is the Child Protection Investigation Summary Report, which is dated, or the investigation commenced twenty seven March, twenty sixteen. And that, that sets out that Grace has reported certain things to Territory Families and then it tracks through what Territory Families were told and what occurred thereafter. And that's a six page document.
Yeah, I know, but which part of it is particular, again, it's not made any easier by the fact that the version I've got and I presume my colleagues have got seems to combine pages and is not sequentially numbered. But which part of that document is most relevant on this issue? There's plenty of disclosures about Miriam touching Kayla. There's a disclosure of, by Miriam of an incident of sexual harm. Where is there a disclosure, and there may be, but where is there a disclosure that Miriam may have been subjected to more than one instance of sexual abuse and over a period of time may have been subjected to sexual abuse? Perhaps we'll leave it there on both and you might, in conjunction with Ms O'Brien, just let us have a note about where an analysis of the documentation leads us on that issue. Because I would, I personally would be assisted by understanding what led to Dr Cleworth's change of assessment. And at the moment, it's not obvious to me. Do you happen to know where Dr Cleworth is, Ms O'Brien, now?
As far as I know, she still provides a service to Central Australia.
She's in Ella Springs, is she?
And she flies in and out.
Ah, so she comes into Ella Springs from time to time.
Yeah.
I see. Thank you. And do you know, I don't want names, but do you know who the officers were responsible for the care of Miriam during the time she was subject to orders that placed her within the decision making responsibility of the department? Whether a particular officer's responsible?
Or her, taking her into care?
I don't know, who, who prepared these documents, who, who look after the file, who make decisions about referrals? But were there particular persons over the period that Miriam was in care responsible?
There were allocated case managers and team leaders and child protection managers.
Yes, and over that period, was there one such case manager or a series of case managers?
Oh, there was, there was a number of case managers.
Are any of them still with the department?
I don't believe so.
All right. All right, thank you. Yes, now, I understand that, Ms Chalmers, do you want to ask some questions?
There I'll liaise with counsel assisting Mr Power about an addendum statement.
All right, well, just before, well, if there's, if you know, I should ask my colleagues whether they have any questions to put to Ms O'Brien. First of all, Commissioner Mason, do you have any questions you wish to put?
No, thank you.
And Commissioner Galbally?
Oh, no, thank you.
Thank you, all right. Ms Chalmers, so you will discuss matters with Mr Power. Is that what you're communicating?
Yes, and we'll attempt to answer the question that you've tried to get, get to the bottom of most recently, Chair.
All right, thank you very much. In that case, Ms O'Brien, and I assume there's nobody else that wants to ask Ms O'Brien any questions. That will conclude your evidence. Thank you very much for attending the Royal Commission, giving your evidence and assisting the Commission in its inquiry. Thank you. Mr Power, what do we do now? Do we adjourn for a short time?
Yes, if we could have a very short break of five minutes and if we can then return with Dr Andrew Webster.
All right, well, it's now, according to my watch, about seven or eight minutes past three Eastern Standard Time, we'll resume at three fifteen Eastern Standard Time.
Thank you, Chair.
The Royal Commission is adjourned. Royal Commission is resumed.
Yes, Mr Power?
Thank you, Chair. The final witness the Commission will hear from this afternoon is Dr Andrew Webster of the Danila Dilba Health Service. He is the Senior Medical Officer of the organisation and he will give evidence from the perspective of an Aboriginal community controlled health organisation. Commissioners, Dr Webster's statement is at tender bundle B at tab twenty five. And there is an extra, sorry, there is an additional document referred to in this statement, which is at tender bundle part B, tab twenty six. I'd ask that the statement be tended as exhibit sixteen point eleven and the other document as sixteen point eleven point one.
Yes, both those documents will be admitted into evidence with the markings you have indicated.
I'd ask that Dr Webster be sworn or affirmed.
Dr Webster, thank you very much for coming to the Royal Commission to give evidence. I understand you wish to take an affirmation. Would you be good enough to follow the instructions of my associate who will administer the affirmation to you?
I will read you the affirmation. At the end, please say yes or I do. Do you solemnly and sincerely declare and affirm that the evidence which you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, Dr Webster. Just to explain where we're all located, Commissioner Galbally is in Melbourne. Commissioner Mason is participating in the hearing from the Brisbane Hearing Room. I am participating from the Sydney Hearing Room. Mr Power, who will ask you some questions, is also in the Brisbane Hearing Room. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr Webster, could you tell the Commission your full name and your occupation?
I'm Dr Andrew Webster. I'm a general practitioner and the Senior Medical Officer at Danila Dilba Health Service.
Thank you. Could I ask if you could keep your voice up? And I might actually ask the technical people if they can just raise the volume a little bit. And Dr Webster, what is Danila Dilba?
So Danila Dilba is an Aboriginal community controlled health service, which means we have an Aboriginal board and an Aboriginal CEO. And we run a health service in the Greater Darwin region, funded predominantly by the Commonwealth Government, with some additional funding through the Territory Government and some other sources. And what we do is we provide health services to the Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander community of the Greater Darwin and Palmerston region of the Northern Territory.
And is it correct that you have a client population of more than fifteen thousand First Nations people, of whom nine thousand are regular clients through nine clinic locations?
Yeah, that's correct. So over fifteen thousand current clients, but about nine to ten thousand of those are regular clients, which means we've seen them three times in the last two years. And you're correct, we do have nine clinic locations in the Darwin and Palmerston region.
Now, in, we, we've heard from Congress and is it correct that Danila Dilba, in a simple terms, is the Darwin equivalent? Or is, is the service for Darwin that Congress is to Ella Springs and its surrounding area?
Yeah, that's correct. There are a few fundamental differences that are worth pointing out. So we are very similar organisations in terms of structure and purpose. Congress does have remote clinics, so they have a number of their clinics in remote locations, whereas we are focused on the urban area. Where I am at the moment in Humpty Do is the most remote we have, and that's about fifty five kilometres outside of Darwin. So we really don't extend into the very remote areas. We're much more of an urban AMS compared to Congress, which has both urban and remote clinics.
Now, in, you, you've given a thirty eight page statement which covers a considerable number of areas, but I want to focus your evidence today, oral evidence today, on two areas. The, the first is pathways into the child protection system. And what Danila Dilba is able to do, does do and is able to do in relation for First Nations children in out of home care. And then secondly, the, Danila Dilba's experience and evidence it can give about the safe care model. So if I don't cover something that's in your statement, it's because I'm seeking to focus on those, primarily on those two areas. So firstly, does Danila Dilba provide a service for children in out of home care in the Greater Darwin area?
Yes, we absolutely do. So we regularly across our clinics see children in out of home care, both those who've been in out of home care for a period of time, but also children who have very recently entered out of home care. That's one of the more common scenarios that we would see in our clinics is where a child has entered out of home care and the carers then bring the child in for a health assessment as they enter care, which is one of the, one of the requirements of the mentoring care. And so we would see children in that circumstance, but then also we do sometimes see children repeatedly when they're in out of home care. And then, of course, when children are returned, hopefully this is what happens, children are returned to families or to family custody. And then we continue to see these children. We, we absolutely see children across a wide range of their lives. And I think one of the unique factors of our organisation is that we also see the parents and the other family members of children who are in out of home care. So we have the benefit of having quite a comprehensive understanding about the factors that are involved and how they influence families and how they impact on families.
And in terms of how a First Nations child enters into the child protection system, are you able to offer a comment from Danila Dilba's perspective on why that occurs at such a high rate for First Nations children compared to non First Nations children?
Yeah, so obviously we're, we're here in a disability Royal Commission, so disability is going to be a key thing of what I would like to mention. So there's a number of factors, but a long history of trauma, dispossession, colonialisation, all of these factors contribute to poorer parental health and mental health outcomes, which then has flow on effects to children. And I think there's absolutely understandable mental health factors that go on here, both for children and their parents, but also physical and more diagnosable disability factors as well. Thinking about conditions such as FASD, which has a relationship between maternal alcohol use and then childhood disability. So there's a number of different bits and pieces that go into this. But I guess in terms of what leads to an overrepresentation of Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people in out of home care, I think there are large numbers of notifications that occur. There is mandatory reporting in the Northern Territory for family violence. And there's also for child sexual abuse, of course. I think the family violence notifications potentially lead to some children ending up in out of home care, whether they get notified in the hospital setting or through a primary care or through another situation, through police. But also I think that there are real challenges of families, parents who are suffering from their own significant physical and mental health issues or illnesses, caring for children who may have disability. I think the capacity of the family unit or of a single parent or both parents caring for a child who may have developmental delay or a genuine overt disability is limited. And there are limited supports available, frankly, for those parents of children with disability to be able to care for them appropriately. And I think that then also has flow on effects to children being removed from parents' custody and ending up in out of home care as well. And further to that, a final point perhaps is that I think, of course, there's, there's a big relationship here with disability and the justice system, which, which we may talk about further as well. So when children have either a diagnosed disability or not, but they have behavioural issues or behavioural challenges, they often are brushing up against the criminal justice system. And that can lead to notifications or in some circumstances, arrest and ending up in Don Dale. And then perhaps that spirals into ending up in out of home care at some point as well. We think about this certainly in our service as a continuum. There is out of home care, safe care houses, Don Dale and then adult prison. And that is a kind of trajectory. and then adult prison. And that is a kind of trajectory that unfortunately we see happening for a number of the kids who come through our service and who are known to our service.
And so in terms of the structure of your statement, you discuss the the vulnerability of certain First Nations children. And note that without early intervention in the provision of culturally appropriate supports, it's more likely that First Nations children will experience negative outcomes. And then at paragraph fifteen, you note the relationship between early childhood trauma, delayed or impaired development and substantiated child protection notifications, which then not infrequently without the appropriate support leads it to out of home care. Danila Dilba, what services does it offer that can try and break that cycle?
Yeah, thanks. So we view ourselves as a whole of lifespan service. So we do care for people throughout, even before birth, from conception essentially all the way to death. We do have a number of services that can do early intervention, which as you've just mentioned is so critically important in interrupting this trajectory or this pattern that we see repeated. One example is ANFPP, the Australian Nurse Family Partnership Programme, which is a team of nurses and Indigenous family workers who start seeing a mother who's pregnant with an Aboriginal child from sixteen weeks gestation, so sixteen weeks into the pregnancy, all the way through until that child is two years of age. And what they help with is mother crafting, assisting the family to get appropriate supports around emotional supports or wellbeing supports, mental health, but also access to social work and getting access to money, that kind of thing. And they also help to do early identification of developmental delays. So the midwives who visit with this programme into children's homes importantly, so they do lots of home visits. They can help to identify anything like speech delay or gross motor delay that might be something that's starting to show up in those early stages. And then we recently have self-funded some paediatricians and a child health service, which we're now able to use to do some diagnostic things. We're in the infancy of where we'd like to be with that, but we are able to do some diagnostic parts of this whole process of understanding what is going on with children, whether they have a disability. And then we're also able to do some therapy. So again, this is an area we're trying to expand in, but speech pathology, occupational therapy and neuropsychology are three really important pillars of early intervention for children with complex neurodevelopmental delay or just, you know, normal developmental delay. And they're things that we would really like to get into more. We're at the infancy of what we would like to do and we can do bits and pieces there. But we can't provide a comprehensive service at the moment, frankly, because we're not funded to be able to do so. We are very envious of what Congress is able to provide with their site, the KYATS service, that they have a much better, sustainably funded, more comprehensive service that can do both diagnosis and therapy. And we would love to be able to move towards that, but unfortunately our funding application for that was unsuccessful recently. So we haven't been able to move in that direction as quickly as we would like.
Okay, so the KYATS, C Y A T S, is something we heard about from Congress this morning. Is it a model that you think could work in the sort of larger urban area of Darwin?
Absolutely. I think that is so evident from the the amount of buy-in, the amount of success that that model has had in Central Australia. We would love to be able to do the same thing and my sense is, as a clinician and as someone working in our service, that we could with very few modifications, make that model work in Darwin almost immediately. You know, if we were funded for it, we could we could press play and we could have that fantastic service tomorrow delivering both therapy and diagnosis for young people. And I think it would have really measurable effects on the long-term outcomes of these kids in terms of, you know, educational attainment, interactions with the justice system, et cetera, et cetera. I think it would be a really meaningful thing that we'd be able to achieve with that.
Now, in that context, I wanted to go to paragraphs thirty four to thirty seven of your statement, which talk about the overrepresentation of First Nations children with disability in out of home care. Now, you commence by noting that in twenty twenty, around eighty eight percent of children and young people in out of home care in the Northern Territory were First Nations. And you then go to some internal data that Danila Dilba holds, paragraph thirty five. And could you just, which notes that over sixty percent of Danila Dilba clients who are in out of home care have a recorded disability. Could you just expand on that, and how you derive that data and whether that's that's a true representation as far as you can tell?
Yeah, look, I think the first thing to say is that it's very likely to be an under-representation. So our clinical information system, so the software that we use when we're seeing patients allows us to identify children who are in out of home care. There's an item that we can use within their file in the system that will identify them as being in out of home care. And we do that to allow us to flag for other practitioners that this child is in out of home care, but also to identify who the carer is and who the territory families case manager are, so that if we need to contact them, we know the contact details. And also in the same software, we are able to identify if people have certain diagnoses. You know, typically for the general population, this would be this person has heart disease, diabetes, high cholesterol. But in the disability context, it might mean things like autistic spectrum disorder, fetal alcohol spectrum disorder, ADHD. So by looking at our whole file, our whole system of those fifteen thousand or so patients, we've looked at the number of those who have been identified as being in out of home care and looked at the number of those who have a diagnosed disability. And that figure is just over sixty percent on our current data. The reason I think it is an underestimate is partly because coding for disability typically happens very late. So you need a formal diagnosis for me as a practitioner to put a disability diagnosis into our clinical information system. If someone had suspected FASD or suspected ADHD, I wouldn't put that diagnosis in their file in all likelihood. I would wait until they had a diagnosis. So I suspect that a number of the children who are identified as being in out of home care are in the diagnostic process of having a disability diagnosed but haven't yet reached that threshold of a formal diagnosis to mean that we would identify them as such in our software. So I think it's difficult to know exactly what the prevalence is at the moment in our population, but I would say it would be it would be higher, it'd be much more like eighty percent in reality. And I think that, you know, sixty percent is probably an undercount.
All right. And so what we're talking about here is children or young people in out of home care seen by Danila Dilba. And as you've said, sorry, at paragraph thirty seven of your statement, you say a very high proportion, greater than eighty percent would have some sort of disability and that's based on your own personal role as a general practitioner, but also in your oversight role. Now, one of the issues that we asked Congress about was whether when children enter out of home care or at some suitable time after they've entered out of home care, whether there should be, given the high rates that you're referring to, there should be a automatic or a presumptive basis that a full multidisciplinary assessment is conducted. Do you have a view on that?
Yeah, so I think this requires a little bit of nuance. The reason being that my own personal experience and I think the experience of many of our clinicians is that those early contacts with children who've entered out of home care can be quite challenging. You know, children have often come from an environment that is highly traumatic and that's caused their removal or led to their removal. And I think requiring a child to have a comprehensive multidisciplinary assessment really early on in that process of transition to out of home care would be really difficult. I think you might not get a good assessment. But likewise, I think it might be harmful to the relationship between the practitioners or the service and the child. Because of them being in that very elevated, very distressed state when they're entering out of home care. So I think my caveat would be that there should be some flexibility around the timing of when that assessment occurs. But I do feel like because of the really high rates of disability that I think we are observing in this group, having that assessment being something that is expected, if not required at some point in their period of being in out of home care, should be something that should be recommended and strongly suggested by the Commission. I think at the very least, there should be something that the that the territory families or equivalents should have to make as a recommendation to always happen unless there's a good reason not to do it. And that should be something that should be made in consultation with the treating team. But in general, I think that having a required assessment at some point at an appropriate time would be a really good requirement of these services.
Now, on that issue of in consultation with the practitioner, at paragraph forty six of your statement, paragraphs forty five and forty six of your statement, you talk about the the best practice approach to assessing and diagnosing many developmental disabilities. And then at forty six, you say that case managers for children in out of home care must be more involved in the healthcare of their wards. Can you just speak to that? What, in terms of a case manager and because it's the system you know best, territory families, what should be the involvement of a case manager with a child's care, healthcare or multidisciplinary care?
Yeah, so at the moment, our experience is that it's very much at arm's length. I think I've mentioned elsewhere in my statement, my frustration as a GP of trying to contact case managers on many, many occasions to often get something as simple as some information about the child. It's worth noting here actually that a number of children we see who are in out of home care may have come from areas outside of Darwin and might not be known to our service already. So they may have come from remote parts of the top end of the Northern Territory and enter care in Darwin because that's where replacements available. And as a result, we may have no health information about them whatsoever. So it can be very difficult to get in contact with a case manager. I know that carers experience a similar frustration because it's a common conversation that I have with carers about case managers changing or not knowing how to contact them or not having them be as available as they would like. I have never, to my recollection, to the best of my recollection, I've never had a case manager attend a general practice appointment with me and a carer and a child in out of home care. I acknowledge that a lot of the case managers probably have significant workloads and they're probably very overburdened, not just here in the Northern Territory, but also elsewhere. But there is a huge opportunity for information sharing and support and collaboration if people are attending, if case managers were to attend clinic appointments with the carer and with the child. I think that would give them just a much better view and understanding about what some of the health factors are that are involved with that particular young person. I know that our paediatricians, who I mentioned before, are developing a service at the moment. They've been really actively trying to engage territory families case managers in doing this kind of thing. And I think they're starting to see some success. But it's very, very fragmented and very individual to the case manager as well. So I guess to summarise, my sense is that for children, particularly those who we suspect of having disability or who already have a diagnosed disability and who are in out of home care, I would really like to see at least a periodic case management or case conference situation occur. Maybe that's something that happens quarterly or it could happen more frequently than that. But a regular case review with the territory families case manager and carer while children are in out of home care, I think should be a could be a really useful thing for everyone involved.
And so if territory families reach out, reached out to Danila Dilba, that's something that Danila Dilba would welcome and facilitate.
Absolutely, absolutely. I know that our practitioners do try and do this on an individual basis and as I've alluded to, they often don't get much success. But if there was something that was more protocolised, I think that would be really useful for everyone involved. You know, I would be able to schedule in a quarterly review with the case manager, the carer and the child. And I would know that I could set aside thirty minutes half to an hour, whatever it would require to do a comprehensive review for that that child to make sure that we all understand their health and disability needs.
Now, in terms of how children out of home care come to Danila Dilba, how does that occur?
Yeah, so they're usually brought in by a care, so it depends. If they're a new entry into out of home care, and this is the typical scenario, they'll generally be brought in by a carer under the guise of them needing to have a comprehensive health assessment on entry into out of home care. And as I just mentioned, in some, in many situations, we will not know the child. So there's a big information gathering piece there. But in some cases, we will know the child very well. So it's more a chance to do a check-in and make sure that we've got everything covered. But generally it's them being brought by a carer and the carer has been told by territory families that this is something that we require you to do in the first week or so of them entering out of home care.
And just briefly, if the child is new to Danila Dilba, what would that first contact consist of?
So we would do the standard health assessment items. So we would do an evaluation of the physical health of the child. Obviously, depending on their age, we tailor that. So we have tailored assessments for every year of age essentially, and including a much more granular assessment in the first year of life because development occurs so quickly during that period. So we would do that assessment, but also there's a big piece of information gathering. So if we've not met the child before, but they go to another health service, like they may come from East Dunllamland and they go to the Meowatch Health Service or they might come from Central Australia and go to Congress. Then we would usually do a request of information form and require a guardian to sign that so we could get the files from that practice to come to us. We do use My Health Record very frequently in this situation. It has been a really big bonus of My Health Record for our services that we can then usually get things like an immunisation record, any key diagnoses or medications from My Health Record. And that can be a very valuable piece of information or a piece of the puzzle. But it generally takes multiple visits to get enough information, have a good view of the child. And the unfortunate situation is that we may not see that child again. Again, I allude to this in my statement, but it's up to the carers essentially where they take the child after that first comprehensive assessment. Generally, we do see the child for the first comprehensive assessment because we're very well set up for doing that. We have Aboriginal health practitioners and nurses who can do the first part and a doctor can complete the second part. Whereas many other practices don't necessarily provide that kind of service. But the unfortunate thing is that we then may not see that child again at all or may not see them for a couple of years because they might start going to a different practice that might be more convenient or more co-located to where the child's carers are living. Which means we get this really fractured care, of course, that we might see them intermittently without that ability to really make a relationship and get information about the child.
We've heard this morning from Congress about a early childhood development assessment tool called ASQTRAC, A S Q hyphen T R A C K, which the Commission was informed was developed by academics from Melbourne University in combination with field research and validation with Congress. Does Danila Dilba use ASQTRAC?
Yes, we do. We've just started using it in the last year. So to use ASQTRAC, you need to be trained in how to do it. So it's not something you can just pick up off the shelf and start using it. You do need to have some education in doing it. So we have had some staff trained and we're trying to train more people to be able to use it. I think, to preempt your next question, I think it is a valuable thing to have and there's such a dearth of culturally and linguistically appropriate assessment tools for developmental delay for Aboriginal people. This is a really valuable, fantastic tool and we would love to be using it more. We will try and expand that. Again, there is a little bit of a factor of funding because you do have to pay to access ASQTRAC. It's not publicly available. And you do have to buy assessment kits as well, which again Um, and you do have to buy assessment kits as well, which again have an additional cost. Uh, but it's something that we would love to see expanded across our service and see it happening in, in all of our clinics, if not just specifically um for children who. Are at increased risk of disability. And I think, as I've mentioned, children who are in out of home care, I believe are at increased risk of having a disability.
And is one of the advantages of ASQTRAC, or two key advantages, um, one, it's, as you've said, it's um. It's culturally appropriate and it's been validated for First Nations children. Um, but secondly, that it's a, that, that. Um, it can be done by um people other than doctors, um, uh, First Nations, um. Uh, staff with a community controlled health organisation can be trained to, to deliver it. Um, is, is that another advantage?
A- absolutely, absolutely the case. So I mentioned our model of providing comprehensive health assessments before where an Aboriginal health practitioner or a nurse will. Um, do the initial part of the assessment and then a doctor the second part. Um. We are really fortunate at Danila Dilba that, that over fifty percent of our staff are Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander and that, that's the same in our clinical staff. So. We often, that often means that when we do these assessments, it is Aboriginal staff members who are taking the lead on them. Um, and frankly, that provides much better information and engagement than me doing it by myself, you know, in spite of. The vast amounts of university time and additional training I've done, there is absolutely no um substitute for Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander people delivering. Services and, and doing assessments like this ASQTRAC um on Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander people. I think there are, there are things that I, I. Would miss or omit or not understand or things that are not said, um, a whole lot of different bits and pieces that. Um, are much better performed by Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander staff. And I think that model is absolutely the preferred one.
And paragraph seventy five of your statement deals with um disability assessments for children in out of home care. Now, um. You've, you've told the commission about the timing of this is critical and having uh the, the assessment done at a time when. Uh, the child or young person is going to um. Rea- relate best to the practitioner who's, who's administering the tests so that it can't be one size fits all of you enter, you get it. Um, rather it needs to be uh something that uh should occur and the, but it's the timing of when it occurs. Um, and you've said that involves requires um Territory Families to be significantly involved in their, in the child or young person's healthcare. Seventy five, paragraph seventy five, however, goes to another thing, which is the, the dollars and cents of doing this. Um, you mention um what, what exists in Medicare. Could you just speak about that as, as you've set it out? Or develop on what you've said in paragraph seventy five?
Yeah, certainly. And, and look, it is unfortunate to have to talk about the, the dollars and cents here because it, it really should just be about. Um, the quality of the care that children receive and, but the reality is that. Services like ours do need to find ways to fund what they're doing or to, to be able to get rebates for the care that they're providing. Um, there isn't a disability specific Medicare item for general practitioners that do an assessment. Um, nor is there for Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander, um, sorry, Aboriginal health practitioners or nurses. Um, so. It does limit us a little bit in terms of using Medicare to fund this kind of activity. We can uh get a Medicare item for a comprehensive health assessment. It's called the seven one five, the Aboriginal Health Assessment. Um, but not specifically for disability. The reason I think, well, there's a few, there's a few bits to that. So. Disability, of course, isn't static. It's not a, you can't take a photo and say, yes, it's there or not. It's not like an X-ray where there's a fracture or there's not a fracture. It's something that's very dynamic over time. And as a result, often it requires multiple assessments with multiple different team members. Gaining a, a broader view of what's happening for a young person and gathering lots of information from different sources. One of the challenges of kids in out of home care is that you don't have a parent to ask. Um, how they've been for a long period of time or how they compare to their peers or their siblings. Particularly in that circumstance where we're seeing a child for the first time and they're new to a carer as well. And there isn't that ability to get that collateral history from the family. That makes it very challenging. But sorry, back, back to your question about the dollars and cents. Um, the, the lack of funding or the lack of ability to, to tie. A particular Medicare item to this activity, I think means that it does get um. Deprioritised is probably not the wrong word, but is not the right word, but not prioritised strongly enough. Um, by health services and I would put our own service in that boat. I think we would like to do more in this area, but. Because we are constrained by funding, uh, we do need to rationalise the, the way we direct our energies. And I, I do think disability services or disability assessments are missing out at the moment.
Now, I want to now turn uh to uh the issue of, of s- uh safe care, uh secure residential. Facilities. Um, but as a way of introducing that, can I ask about Danila Dilba's um. Uh, role and experience with dealing with um children and young people in detention in the Northern Territory?
Yeah, certainly. So um, and, and to provide the, the context here, so. Our frame of thinking about this is that it is a continuum out of home care, safe care houses or supportive bail accommodation. Dondale, which is the youth detention centre and the adult prison, they are, they are all a spectrum of a similar kind of uh process that's occurring. So we became involved in Dondale um after the Royal Commission uh in twenty seventeen. Uh, there was a settlement and part of that settlement with the um, the detainees at the time of that Royal Commission was that there would be. Um, community controlled health services involved in delivering care in the youth detention setting. Danila Dilba worked with Territory Families um over a period of years to get to the point where we, we were able to take over the health services in the youth detention centre. Uh, and that occurred in July last year on the first of July uh twenty twenty. Prior to that, um. Health services were provided by the Northern Territory Government, the Department of Health. So we've now been uh providing health services in Dondale for about fifteen months. We have. A full-time G P, so five days of work uh a week, um, general practitioner, um, a full-time nurse and an allied health or psychology role. Um, and we also provide a, a limited after hours service as well. Um, and we've had a really big change over that period of time in, in the level of. Involvement in Dondale from um initially some reluctance and suspicion, some suspicion from the young people and from. Uh, Territory Family staff to now being very uh integrated within the operations of the centre, but also having really good relationships with young people. Where our staff now walk around and, you know, they get fist bumps from the, the uh young people who are in detention and they, everyone knows each other by name. It's a very. Um, engaged, good rapport environment and it's had a very material difference on the care that we're able to provide in terms of. You know, children are up to date with vaccinations now. Um, a number of them are taking medications that they. Um, had been prescribed but hadn't taken for years. There are a number of new diagnoses of significant disabilities and, and mental health uh issues. And we've had a lot of benefits in terms of integrating our service with the paediatricians and the psychiatrists and other services um as well. So it's been a very. Steep learning curve, but I think a very positive um experience for ourselves, but also for Territory Families who provide the operations of Youth Detention Centre.
And uh, uh, paragraph one hundred and seven of your statement notes that um through work at Dondale. Danila Dilba um has been very concerned that the vast majority of children coming into youth detention centre. Are in out of home care prior to their detention and also that the vast majority have a diagnosed or undiagnosed disability. And that nearly a hundred percent of those children are First Nations persons. Um, and that, that is a reflection. Of what you've said elsewhere in your statement about um the role that. Uh, that undiagnosed disability plays in getting someone into help out of home care. And then unfortunately, what's described as the, the um care criminalisation pathway, pathway. That enters them into Dondale and ultimately into adult prisons. Is that what you observed?
Yeah, so um just to explain that a little bit, so our, our observation is, or our experience as a service is that um. Children who may have a disability, whether it's diagnosed or not, um, will start to have behavioural issues and that might be. Related to poor impulse control, um, and inability to regulate emotions. And, and this manifests itself in um what's often viewed as being bad behaviour, whether that's in the school or, or with carers. That might mean that children, the children are um difficult to care for and, and families are not supported sufficiently to be able to care for children. Which might lead to them being in out of home care. But then the, the projection of that or the, the, um, the next steps of that is that they end up. Being involved with the criminal justice system and that might be uh through the poor impulse control leading to um drug-taking and risk-taking behaviour. Or um the emotional dysregulation or the behavioural dysregulation, meaning that they might be involved in, in criminal acts. Um, and. Then the environment of, of um uh out of home care doesn't necessarily allow them to. Or always allow them to intervene or to receive the therapy that they require to halt that trajectory into Dondale. And, and then they end up in Dondale and unfortunately, um, the recidivism, recidivism rate is very, very high. We see the same kids cycling through Dondale where. They um come from out of home care and they go into Dondale and then they leave Dondale back into out of home care and then back into Dondale. It's a really um tragic cycle, unfortunately.
You say, uh, Dr, Dr Webster, you say in paragraph one hundred and seven that uh. Through your work, DDHS has been concerned to observe that the vast majority of children coming into youth detention in the Northern Territory. Are in out of home care prior to their detention. Has any, to your knowledge, any study being done to determine the proportion of children who. Get into uh youth detention, who, that the proportion that have been in out of home care prior to detention?
I don't know what the current figures are, um, and that would be something that would be worth asking Territory Families. I'm sure they would have that. Uh, that data because of course they deliver out of home care and they deliver the services in Dondale. Um. The challenge we would have from our own internal data of answering that question is that. Children in Dondale come from all over the Northern Territory. They're not only from the Darwin region and.
Uh, I, I, I wasn't suggesting, I wasn't suggesting that you should gather it. I was just wondering if there was a study.
Yeah, not, not to my knowledge of, of current data. I'd, I'd be very keen and interested to know um if there are some current data, but I don't know of them.
Do you know of any study that has compared rates of disability of Aboriginal children? Who are in out of home care compared to those who are not?
I don't, I don't know of any published peer reviewed study that has um suggested that. Uh, again, I think it'd be a useful question to ask, um, and it's probably not a hard question to answer, but I'm not, I'm not aware of that being published anywhere.
Thank you.
Um, so uh, in the paragraphs that follow, uh, one O seven, the paragraph, uh, the chair referred to. You talk about the very high rates of um, of severe neurodevelopment, neurodevelopmental impairment. Um, in Western Australian, uh, Western Australian Youth Detention Centre. And um you've observed that although a similar study hasn't been undertaken in Northern Territory. The experience of your health services, you think it would be likely to be replicated. Um, and. Can you just, and you then go on to say that Danila Dilba um would be very well placed to provide. That sort of multidisciplinary um assessment for those neurological, neuro, sorry. Neurodevelopmental impairments. Could you just explain why that is?
Yeah, um, so first of all, yes, I, we often mention this uh Banksy Hill study because I think it is um unique in the sense that it is. Good quality evidence of the prevalence of neurodevelopmental disorders, disabilities and particularly FAS D in a, in a youth detention setting. Um, and we would love to be able to replicate something similar in Northern Territory. Uh, however, again, that's about. Um, funding for a research study which is very comprehensive and, and um not easy to come by.
And sorry, could I pause there? Is that, is that a fun, is that a research study that Danila Dilba would be able to do in conjunction with some academics? Is that something that Danila Dilba could facilitate?
Certainly. So I think um the way that it was done in Banksy Hill was uh the Telethon Institute collaborated with um W A uh. Equivalent of Territory Families who are running the Youth Detention Centre. Um, and. They were able to gather information over a long period of time, which is what's required. Because to, to reach a diagnosis of FAS D, as I'm, as I'm sure you've been hearing um in these hearings. There are often multiple assessments from multiple different providers over a period of sometimes twelve to eighteen months. So it's not a short study. Um, but it's something that we, we already have a health service that's there. We, we have the relationships with the young people. Um, it's something that I think feasibly could be done. It would just be about uh finding the, the funding to do it. In terms of what would, you know, you've always got to ponder. What's the value of doing the research? What question would this answer that's going to be useful? And I think, I think the prevalence question of. Disability among people, you know, children in out of home care, as, as the chair just asked, I think that's still a pretty um. Thin area of evidence and it would be useful in terms of public policy and funding to be able to describe that a bit better. So therefore I think this kind of study. In our context in Dondale, which as we've mentioned, has almost a hundred percent Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander population, would be a useful one to do.
And I, I, not only in terms of the pure knowledge of this, you know, cohort at the time of the study, but it, it would presumably allow. That cohort to receive a diagnosis and be, and receive treatment and support for those diagnoses that otherwise. And they exit Dondale into the adult system without ever having the diagnosis.
Yes, that's right. So um I've mentioned this elsewhere in my statement, but if, if you don't get a diagnosis. Um, for many of these neurodevelopmental conditions during childhood, um, or adolescence. It becomes nearly impossible to do so as an adult. Um, so if you don't. Get a diagnosis through the, the various opportunities for funding or public services that are available for paediatric assessments, then. Getting them funded um for an adult is extremely expensive and it's beyond the means of most of our, our patients to be able to access that. For, for example, I've got a patient at the moment. Um, who had been in out of home care, interestingly, um, who probably has autistic spectrum disorder and um. Didn't receive a diagnosis as a child. And now the, the quote for him to be able to receive an assessment is, is around two thousand dollars, which. He or his family can't afford and, and of course our health service can't um, can't afford to, to pay that for this, this person and probably the many others who are in his situation as well.
The final uh topic if I can deal with is uh paragraphs one twenty to uh one twenty eight of your statement deal with. Secure residential care facilities in the Northern Territory. Um, could you tell uh the commission? Um, what Danila Dilba has, has a, what, sorry, start again. Um, in this space. What Danila Dilba perceives as the uh opportunities and the risks of developing these sort of uh models? And what role Danila Dilba could play?
Yeah, thank you. So this has a um been a. Big area of passion, certainly for our, our former CEO, Olga Havnan, um, and many of our other um senior leaders in the organisation for some time. Partly it's driven by the recognition that Dondale Youth Detention Centre. Remains a really inappropriate and unsatisfactory environment um for children. It, it's not. It is secure, but it is definitely not therapeutic in any way. Um, and. It, even in spite of our presence there and, and the work that we are trying to do and, and acknowledging the work that Territory Families have done to try and improve the um. The environment of that setting, it's not set up to be a therapeutic facility and it will never be able to be one. It still is very much a, a decommissioned adult prison. Um, which is the reality of, of what it is. So there's also um the Darwin Safe Care House, which is uh, I guess a kind of. Step down um in terms of environment from Dondale. It again, um, has a very limited therapeutic model, I would say. Um, we have no involvement in, in that safe care house. We have. Uh, made approaches and we've requested to be involved in either providing services or being engaged in that service in the past. Um, but haven't been met with much uh traction or much success. Our view is that um we're really well placed. We. Can provide a range of services. As I've mentioned, we'd like to provide more, but we can do. Some diagnosis and some therapy and we have a large number of Aboriginal staff who can provide that cultural safety and cultural engagement, which I think is really valuable for. Um, young people in particular who are maybe um experiencing disability or experiencing hardship of other kinds. So we have expressed an interest in being involved more and we would be well placed to be involved more, but there's also such a huge opportunity for. But there's also such a huge opportunity for this secure therapeutic facility, secure residential facility being expanded in Darwin. I've mentioned in my statement just one example of a case of a, a young person who was unfit to stand trial, but there was no suitable other location for him to be housed. So he stayed in Don Dale for a very long period. Um which is extremely unfortunate that there was um, there was no alternative, I guess. We are attracted by um some of the things that have been demonstrated through uh the Sherwood House model in, in New South Wales, but also internationally with the diagramma model um coming out of Spain and, and that's been used in the UK and some other areas.
And sorry, just with the Spanish model, I apologize, just with the Spanish model. What, what is the Spanish model?
Yeah, so um diagramma is the name of the uh organisation. It's a, it's a not-for-profit organisation that's um now runs a number of youth detention centres in Spain and the UK and I believe a couple of other parts of Europe. Um and what they do is they take a much more therapeutic than detention approach. Um they're often in locations uh like an agricultural area of Spain, so they have access to horses and gardens, but they have a much bigger staffing model around um the therapy services that I mentioned, occupational therapy, speech pathology, neuropsychology and healthcare, so medical care, and much less of an emphasis on um youth justice officers. A- and that's not to say that the, the children who are um offenders or people who've been sentenced in, in those areas are um are any less at risk of, of um, of violence or, or whatever in the centre. Uh they just manage it in a very different way. And I think there are opportunities for Australia more broadly to learn about how we could um look at justice models that might be more therapeutic and more rehabilitative.
Um, thank you. Uh Chair, that's all the questions I had.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Galbally, do you have any uh questions of Dr Webster?
Um, Dr Webster, thank you very much um to your evidence. I'd like to ask about um parents with a disability and their children going into out-of-home care. And, you know, almost as an automatic response sometimes and whether you, you know, you know, whether you can comment on that.
I can comment to say that we absolutely see that. Um so we, as I've mentioned, we're in the fortunate position of being often the care provider for parents or for families and for children who might end up in out-of-home care. So we do get a good sense of the, the family unit and the family dynamics that are going on there. Um I think uh your, your statement is, is broadly correct. It's what we, we observe and what we experience that parents with a disability, um I would say are more likely to have their children end up in out-of-home care. I, I don't know whether that's um causal or association. I'm not sure what the factors are that contribute to that, but I suspect that again, it comes back to a lack of support services for those parents with disability. My feeling is that if there were more wraparound support services for those parents with disability to be able to care for and look after their children, that we would see a lot, a lot fewer children ending up in out-of-home care. It's something that we do try to provide um some supports in, but we are really limited in how much we can provide for individual families around their, their supports outside of the NFPP programme and a few other programmes we have. Um and it's something that I don't see uh territory families or, or other social services organisations being very involved in. Um and it's a real shame. I think there's another big opportunity there of course as well.
Thank you.
Commissioner Mason.
Uh yes, thank you. Uh just one question. Uh thank you for your evidence today. I really kind of appreciate and grateful for the time that you've given to the Royal Commission, both in preparing a statement also today. Just interested in the national picture, um Dr Webster, about uh this initiative that Congress in Central Australia has started, the CYA, two years. I mean, your statement um at paragraph eighty-five, you mentioned that uh Danila Dilba uh would like to establish a similar service. Uh an in-house comprehensive disability assessment team, just interested in with Aboriginal Community Controlled Health Organisation's discussions at the national level with your peak organisation, Nacho, if there's discussions amongst colleagues about what the picture looks like in other regional areas where there are large populations of Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander people with similar uh profiles, as we've been hearing about today in the Taurangans and in Central Australia.
Hmm. Yeah, thanks for that question. Um there are discussions uh on this and I think it's a it's a widely recognised area of um opportunity and an, and a recognised area of a need to grow into this space. Um tied up with this um is a recognition of the need for Aboriginal Community Controlled Health Services or organisations to also become NDIS service providers. Um and we haven't mentioned that here, but I think it's really interlinked. So if we had the um, the KIAID's model that Congress has, we could do diagnosis and some therapy while, while doing the diagnosis part. And then once the diagnosis is achieved, we would probably want to be transitioning people to be accessing services through the NDIS and in Darwin and, and it's the same almost everywhere else around the country. There are very few um Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander led or staffed allied health service providers. And that's a huge impediment to be able to provide really good care for these children and their families, I think. So I think what it's going to mean is that if we do go down this route of being able to have Aboriginal Community Controlled Health Services provide better diagnostic services through a KIAID's type model, we're also going to need to see a transition to becoming more mature as organisations to be able to provide NDIS services as a, as an NDIS service provider. Now that process is really, really challenging. It's something that we're exploring at the moment. I know some other Community Controlled Health Services have gone down that route with some success. Uh I think CAMHS and the Kimberley being one of them. Um but it's a really um difficult model to, to take on and, and make successful. So uh it's something that there could be a lot more support. And I, I know that, that Nacho have been talking about this and they have been doing um some work on this over the last five years or so. Um but I think it's a real area of, of opportunity and, and an area for a lot more growth. Um because if we're not doing the, the diagnosis by itself is not useful. Um it might be useful in terms of a data, from a data perspective or from a uh, you know, a accounting perspective, but the thing that actually matters is the therapy. It's the intervention, the ability to help children and their families with behaviours or issues that they're experiencing to be able to have them have more functional and, and more happy and healthy lives, of course. So we need to move much more into that space and it's a difficult road, but one that we need to go down, I would say, in the next few years. Not just us, but our whole sector, I imagine.
Thank you.
Uh Dr Webster, I see that you have a Master of Business Administration from Cambridge. Does it help? Does it help?
Uh honestly, I think about it almost every day. Um that's not an exaggeration because so much of what we've been talking about um does seem to come down to funding so frequently. Um you know, it's about government allocating resources. It's about us being able to access funding through certain areas. It's also about trying to be persuasive in terms of um marketing yourself or in terms of being able to put together a funding submission. Um so I think it, it has helped and I think having the international perspective has helped as well. You know, I met a lot of people through that course who'd come from a, a wide variety of different backgrounds and, and different health services. Um so yeah, perhaps your question was a, a, a little flippant, but I, I think um.
No, no, it wasn't, it wasn't flippant at all because uh I would have thought that the skills associated with uh a Master of Business Administration, at least at a moderately respectable university like Cambridge, would help to a considerable extent.
Yeah, it has. It's something uh, this is probably beyond the scope of the, this particular Royal Commission, but I think it's something that a lot of um leaders in health could value, uh get value from is doing some sort of formal training in in business because whether we like it or not, um it is, it is necessary to think about funding and um and the way that uh our business models or care delivery models work in terms of providing good value for money. Um and it's not going to change because healthcare is going to continue to cost more and more. So we need to be really clever about how we use that money.
Hmm. Well, it would go to the way in which you use the resources, what sort of programmes you develop, how you assess outcomes, all of those things, I imagine, uh would benefit from uh something like the uh uh postgraduate degree that you have. Um can I direct your attention to paragraph thirteen of your statement and note four? You refer there to nearly half of all First Nations children in the Darwin region being developmentally vulnerable on one or more domains. We heard this morning from Congress that they had done a study in the two thousand and fifteen or based on the two thousand and fifteen census material that led to a similar conclusion. And they said, as I understood it, that it would be very good to do that with the two thousand and eighteen data. Did you or somebody actually conduct the study of the two thousand and eighteen data to disaggregate uh First Nations children from other children who were covered by that census?
Uh I can't recall exactly um uh how we looked at this data. My suspicion is, and my recollection is that um perhaps there was more granular data for the Darwin region than for um the Alice Springs or the Central Australian region. Um so maybe we were able to do it and that might have been a um, a weight of numbers thing. Maybe there were uh the census sometimes doesn't publish um information if they feel like the numbers are are very small and they feel like it won't be indicative of something. So um I would have to check, but I, I, I can't remem-, I don't think we did the evaluation ourselves. I think it was something that was available um through the um, through the census itself. Um so yeah.
Uh Dr Webster, if uh you were able to just let us know through uh the, your, through our Office of Solicitor Assisting, uh uh
Yep.
the source of that material, it would be interesting because it would link into what we were told this morning. And it may help us uh compile a rather more complete picture than otherwise would be available.
Absolutely. I'll make a note of that and, and I can certainly get back to you.
All right. Thank you very much. Um may I assume that uh and Miss Chalmers, you don't need to ask Dr Webster any questions? Is Miss Chalmers there?
I think she's not, Chair, she may still be on mute. Yeah.
Yeah. Can you hear me, Chair?
Sorry?
Hello?
Yes, hello. Very nice to see you. But I, do you wish to ask any questions of Dr Webster?
Uh, no.
Thank you. All right. In that case, uh Dr Webster, thank you very much for giving evidence and thank you very much for the detailed statement you have and the thought that has obviously gone into it. Uh we very much appreciate uh your assistance and the very interesting evidence you've given this afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks very much for your time.
Thank you. Uh Mr Crowley, what are we going to do tomorrow? And at least from my point of view and possibly from my colleague's point of view, what material do we have to look at by way of homework for tomorrow?
Uh Chair, tomorrow we have uh two case studies. Uh we have uh Leah in the morning, who will be speaking about um her uh being the carer of Connor. And we will then hear from uh two uh witnesses from the Western Australian Department of Communities in respect of that um matter. And then in the afternoon, we'll have uh a evidence from Maggie, uh which is uh about the care of Elliot. In terms of um.
Sorry, that, that last session is pre-recorded, as I understand.
Yes, that's right, Chair.
Now, with the evidence that will be given in the morning, uh Leah, is there a statement or will that be wholly oral evidence?
There is a statement, Chair, that's been uh provided.
All right. So there's a statement from Leah, thank you. And, and also from Mr Mace and Miss Samuels. They each have statements?
It's Mr Mace primarily who has the statement. Miss Samuels is attending to give evidence as part of the panel to provide more of the operational perspective. She's done a covering statement, but not a substantive statement.
Right. So Mr Mace is the one who has provided the more substantive statement?
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. So we'll resume then at uh ten AM tomorrow, uh Eastern Standard Time.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. We'll adjourn until then.
The Royal Commission into violence, abuse, neglect and exploitation of people with disability is adjourned.